For Tuesday, May 27th, we'll come to order. Councilman Nacano, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, once again, I'd like to apologize to the community for the late start of our regular city council meeting. We were involved in a study session dealing with the parking in the downtown area. We actually thought we would get through that today, but it's going to be a continued item, so stay tuned. There will be additional information coming out concerning the downtown parking. Okay, in memory of, this is the 30th anniversary of the passing of Glendora Police Officer Louis Pompey. On this 30th anniversary of Officer Louis Pompey's passing, the San Dimas community comes together to honor and remember his dedicated service and ultimate sacrifice. Officer Pompey served with courage, professionalism, and a deep commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Though 30 years have passed, his legacy remains a lasting part of our city's history and the hearts of those who knew and served alongside him. We express our heartfelt gratitude to Officer Pompey and extend our continued support to his family, friends, and fellow officers. The city of San Dimas will never forget the bravery and selflessness that has defined his service. With all due respect and remembrance, the San Dimas community. Councilman Weber would have a few words to say at this time.
I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. As many might know, I used to work as a Glendora police officer for about 10 years. But the one unique part of my career, I guess predates my law enforcement career, and I was very close to the Glendora Police Department around the time of Officer Pompey's death. And that incident shaped me and the direction of my career greatly, and so having the opportunity to say a few words is very much appreciated. For those that don't know, Officer Pompey was killed when he was trying to intervene in a violent armed robbery at the Villa Verdi Vons Market in 1995. So June 9th of this year marks the 30th anniversary of his murder and a watershed event in the city of San Dimas. Many of our residents I hear every year look back upon that incident and can remember very vividly what that evening was like. And as I said, the months and years after that incident shaped me personally. I consider it being so close to the department around that time of privilege, to watch firsthand as a department of officers and friends of Louis grieved, healed, and bonded through that tragedy. It undoubtedly shaped my career choice and the type of officer that I would eventually become when I entered the profession myself. You know, Louis was a police officer for seven years at the time that he was killed, and I always looked to him as a coworker of my father, so kind of an elder figure. But at a certain point in my career, I reached seven years in my career. And in these types of incidents, you tend to draw a lot of parallels. And every June 9th, when we've stood at the memorial at the Villa Verdi Park next to the Vons where he was killed, I've had a little extra moment of pause to think just how fortunate I am to have an eighth year and a ninth year and now 18 years, because not everybody is afforded that privilege, and it's a gift. It truly is. And it's often said that each of us will actually die twice in our life, and that, of course, is actually dying the first time, but our second death is the last time that somebody says your name. And now, 30 years later, I know that San Dimas has done a fantastic job of remembering Officer Pompey, and we will continue to do so. And all of us are eternally grateful for his sacrifice and the heroism that he showed to protect our community, and I know that we will always continue to do so. And I want to thank the community for remembering him and always being at the events to remember him. Again, the remember ceremony this year is not actually going to be on June 9th as it normally is. It's going to be on June 8th, Sunday, at 5:00 PM at Villa Verdi Park. So if you'd like to come out and remember Louis, that is the opportunity to do so this year. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to introduce Lilly Flores, who will make a presentation concerning the manufactured housing opportunity and revitalization grant.
It's not on? Oh, there we go. Sorry. Today, we have the honor to introduce our first recipient of the Housing Rehabilitation, Manufactured Housing Opportunity and Revitalization Program, which we'll call MORE. The city of San Dimas is one of only 28 agencies awarded funds in the first ever round of awards from the state of California's MORE program. The city, as a local jurisdiction, is one of only three cities in Southern California and the only city in Los Angeles County awarded these funds. The city was awarded $1.5 million to grant low-income mobile homeowners assistance to make critical health and safety repairs, as well as make meaningful upgrades to their homes for energy efficiency savings, refurbishment, restoration, and more, including replacement. Mrs. Edith Mortocho, 72, has been a resident of San Dimas Mobile Home Land Mobile Home Park for the past 29 years. She owned the mobile home with her husband, who passed in 2022. Ms. Mortocho signed up for our housing rehab programs waitlists, requesting assistance for roof replacement, windows, and structural repairs. When the Housing Division inspected the unit for rehabilitation, there were a lot of health and safety violations that needed to be addressed, and it was determined that the cost to replace the unit outweighed, I'm sorry, the cost to rehab the unit, repair it, outweighed the cost to replace it. So the Housing Division compiled the information needed and made a request to HCD for a replacement. We were granted approval December 20th, 2024, and surprised Edith with the opportunity to get a new home. The city of San Dimas was the first agency in the state to be approved for a replacement of a unit for a low-income homeowner under the MORE program. Edith was able to select the home's exterior colors, interior colors, flooring, kitchen cabinets, and countertops. The home came equipped with a built-in refrigerator, dishwasher, microwave, and stove, and the unit was ordered and delivered on Friday, May 2nd, and after installation and inspections, Edith received the keys to her new home last Tuesday, May 20th. The city also coordinated with one of our partners, Habitat for Humanity, Pomona Valley, who donated a full-size bed, two nightstands, dresser, a sofa, and a reclining chair. I just wanted to show you some videos or some pictures here. This was the home when we went out to inspect it. Ms. Edith had a damaged roof, so she had a lot of roof leaks and damages. The front exterior of the home had received from notices from park management that the mobile home was in need of washing and painting. The skirt was damaged. Inside, because of the water repairs, there was a lot of the ceiling deterioration, damaged walls. It was an original 1962 unit, so it had all the original windows, and that didn't close properly, so a lot of water got in, and there was a lot of damage. So you can see a lot of water-damaged insulation exposed. It also had all the original appliances, so the original stove, which didn't work, her cabinets didn't open and close properly, and her oven didn't work as well. The furnace was not working either, no air conditioning units were also not working, and because of the not being installed correctly, there was a lot of water that got in, and then she just had a lot of water damage to the unit. There wasn't any flooring in the hallway, the bathtub was rusted and deteriorating, and her subfloor was very damaged and soft, felt like you were going to go through. So we got the new unit, a couple of videos. We were actually there to witness the unit coming in. It's pretty something neat to experience. Ms. Edith was also there to witness this. We also took some pictures of the crew setting up the unit. They are installing, they're putting up the shed right there and the stairs. And then this is the inside of the unit. As you can see, it's beautiful. It comes with the appliances. As I said, she was able to choose the flooring, the countertop, the color of the cabinets, and these are the furniture that Habitat donated. They also donated her bed, dresser, some sheets, pillows. This is her master bathroom that's connected to the master bedroom. It has a second bedroom, and then this is the other bathroom, two full baths in the home. And then this is us in front of the unit and Ms. Edith in front of the unit the day she got the keys. So since this is the first time that the actual state has done this, we wanted to do a presentation and ask the council to come and congratulate Ms. Edith Mortocho and have us all take a photo with her so we could send it over to the state. I promised her she wouldn't have to speak, so I don't want to...
Can I leave the hall? Thank you, guys.
All right. June 15th through June 21st. I'm not sure why I'm making this presentation when we have Ryan here, who's our lifetime representative. Right now, I'd like to have...
Team player here, you guys.
Anais Medina Diaz, meet me at the... Ryan, since you're the head bottle washer here, why don't you step up there with me?
Fantastic, great.
We're just going to make this presentation. We're not going to read all of this, but the reality is, thank you very much for keeping Ryan busy once a month.
It's our pleasure. I'm just here to present just a public information opportunity here. My name is Anais Medina Diaz. I'm the Director of Communications. Thank you, City Council and Honorable Mayor, residents, for being here. I just want to thank the council again for proclaiming June 15th to the 21st as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. I'm mouthful, I know. But this offers the opportunity to inform our residents or remind them, increase awareness about the effect that mosquitoes have on public health. They're not just pesky biters. They do transmit deadly diseases. Here in our area, we worry about West Nile virus. It is endemic. But we also worry about Dengue now. Just last year, we had 11 locally transmitted cases in the San Gabriel Valley out of the 18 in the state. So this is brand-new, something we need to watch out. And so mosquito control is a shared responsibility. So we just ask folks to tip, toss, and protect. Tip out stagnant water, toss out unused containers, and protect using a repellent with one of the CDC-recommended ingredients, which include DEET, bicasidin, IR-3535, and oil of lemon eucalyptus. So that's a very succinct presentation, but thank you again. And now that temperatures are warm, we really hope that folks are protecting themselves and getting rid of stagnant water. So thank you.
Thank you. Prior to Ryan taking over, I was the representative for the council for the mosquito abatement deal, and Ryan came to me and said, "I really want to do this." And so he's now become the expert, and as you noticed, later on, he'll be pushing off coyotes onto somebody else, too.
He's really created quite the buzz around mosquito abatement. I was itching to get involved with this. It's the truth of the matter. But don't forget Tip-Toss Thursdays, everybody. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to at staff or set for a discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk?
The first speaker is Doran Barnes.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Doran Barnes, and I come before you tonight as the Chair of your San Dimas 2026 Committee. And we are working hard to plan what will truly be a historic celebration in 2026, recognizing both the United States' 250th Independence Day and the city's birthday. A lot of cool things are happening. The event was going to happen on, actually, Independence Day Eve, July 3rd, so mark your calendar, 2026. It will combine the best concert of the entire concert season for 2026. The city already has the band booked. It'll include the farmer's market. It'll have a car show, not as big as the Sheriff's Booster Car Show, but a car show will be a part of the event. And really, the thing that's going to set this off as being completely different is a drone show. It's going to happen all right here at Civic Center Park, and if you can imagine that drone show happening just to the north of us, it's going to be super cool. Of course, it takes resources to pull this all together, and that's our focus right now. I've already reported to you that Mike Wallace stepped up as our first platinum sponsor, and we appreciate all that Mike does for the community. Vicky Malazewski, if I say that right, with Kaleo Realty, I think we all know her, Six Foot Vicky. Vicky has stepped up as our second platinum sponsor, and we are super grateful to Vicky for all that she does for the community. You can often see her at the farmer's market. I think she's out there pretty much every week. A couple of other sponsors include Rita McGee. She stepped forward. Through the mayor's advocacy, Foothill Transit is stepping forward as a sponsor. Thank you, Mayor, for making that request. And a sponsor that just came in last week that I think really denotes what we're trying to do in terms of an environmentally-friendly, clean-air event, the South Coast Air Quality Management District has stepped forward as a sponsor for this event as well. And that's not something that they typically would do, but they recognize the clean-air benefits of what we're trying to accomplish. We have a lot more to do. We have two more platinum sponsorships available, plus a whole host of other sponsorships. The platinum sponsors, one of the cool things about being a platinum sponsor is that your company's logo can appear high in the sky as part of the drone show. So it's really a way to get super involved. But we have lots of other sponsorship opportunities. I've left for you our sponsorship opportunity booklet that has lots more details. This can also be found on our website, sandtimastwentytwentysix.com. Ways to participate as a financial sponsor, but also to participate with the committee. So you're going to be hearing about this until 2026 gets here, and then you'll be tired of hearing about it, but I'm going to keep pumping this up until we get to that point. I can't thank you enough and can't thank the city staff enough for all that we're doing together to really make this a truly historic event. So always glad to answer any questions and looking forward to 2026.
Super. Thank you. Thank your committee for us, please.
The next speaker is Barbara Torley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I will just read in order to keep within the three-minute timeframe. I hope you don't mind. The open space maintenance assessment that is a subject, one of the subjects of this public hearing, involves a landscaped hillside along Paseo Alondra that affects residents who have questions and concerns. The responses to these questions and concerns will help manage the expectations of affected residents regarding the maintenance that we pay for. The assessment is approximately $12,000, and we would like to know, for that amount of money, what is the interval of service on tree trimming, on clearing of shrub overgrowth, on irrigation system checks, and on cleaning out of the drainage swale that runs along Paseo Alondra? There is a history of uprooted trees and the breaking and falling of very large branches along Paseo Alondra. The street has been completely blocked by massive fallen branches that prevented residents' vehicles from exiting driveways and from being able to travel down the street. Residents were unable to get to work until city workers cleared the road. Some minor property damage had occurred. There is a safety concern that if uprooted, the very tallest trees or the large branches could crush people, homes, and vehicles. Some trees and shrubs completely died or had brown, dried-out leaves due to overgrowth and insufficient water. As we enter the hot, dry season, there's also a safety concern over fire danger, especially after the recent Eaton and Palisades fires. especially after the recent Eaton and Palisades fires. The drainage swale that runs along part of the hillside is well-hidden by shrubbery. It attracts coyotes, who use it to cross between the undeveloped sections of the Via Verde area that have become their habitat. And lastly, homeless persons have used the swale and shrubbery around it to sleep and eat, and have left behind trash, clothing, blankets, and various items over the hillside. So it's my hope that if we don't have answers to these questions or concerns, that someone from the city could contact me or my neighbors to provide that information at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sure Sherry would, or Scott will talk to you. Thank you, next.
Next speaker is Teri Bearden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Okay, Barbara and I are both here for the same problem. The only thing that I wanna add, because we both are concerned about the trees and the damage, is that when we got the bill, I noticed that Paseo Dorado, there's only three houses there that are being charged with the amount. And we wanna know why the other houses, or how did they get away from not having to contribute to take care of that hillside? And I'm also concerned a little bit about the homeless problem, because as Barbara mentioned, they have been living in that swell, but they also come into the houses. We catch them urinating on our property, they steal the cushions, they went to one house, stole the children's backpacks that were right there on the front, and then we found some of the stuff, they dumped it over at Via Verde Park. So whatever, I am really here to, I also wanna compliment Scott Wasserman, also Steve Farmer, and Steve Baragon, because all three of them have tried to help us with this, but we still have a huge problem with those trees. And they're so huge. And just recently, a big branch just broke, but I called, and he said, "Thank you for calling," and they came and did it. But I'm concerned, if a branch like that breaks just like that, what is it, what's going on with the rest of the trees? So I really appreciate if we can tell our neighbors what else we can do to assess this problem. Thank you.
Super, I'm sure Scott will also talk with you at some point.
Speaker number four did not give a name, but they wanted to speak regarding skate park lights.
Hello, good evening. I am here about the skate park lights. I'm not aware of any plans to install lights at the skate park at Pioneer Park. Our mission is equal access to lit skate parks. Right now, I can walk through the park, I can play tennis, I can play basketball, but at 5:00 in the wintertime, all the lights are gone. So I have access to drive to another park with lights, but a lot of our youth don't have lights, they don't have any place to go. So they're either forced to go to the basketball court, or who knows what. So every new skate park has lights. It's a part of, they see the benefits of having lights. With lights, kids have a safe place to go. It highlights, also too, bringing lights to the Pioneer Skate Park could highlight one of the jewels of San Dimas, being the skate park. Also does, it also, it lessens crime as well, too, graffiti, 'cause a lot of times, people go to places that are dark. If the only place in the skate, if the only place in the park is a skate park, people are gonna go there to drink, do graffiti, but if it's lit, it adds more visibility for emergencies. If there is anything in the park, police can see what's going on, instead of having a dark space. So I come here behalf of all the youth, future youth, and all the people that just want more access to local skate parks. Like I said, I'm not aware of any plans to do anything now. I've talked to some people at Parks and Rec, and I know that they recently got some funding for soccer fields, I believe, but not with the skate parks. So our mission also, too, is to provide lights here, also Azusa and Glendora. All those parks don't have lights. Claremont does have lights, I spoke into the people there, they've said it's been a benefit to have lights. Some even the skate parks have like a push button, just like the tennis courts at Pioneer Park. If the lights are off, you just push the button and you have lights. So I think it could be a huge benefit to the park and to San Dimas, especially with the access of the new trains, bringing more people to the city. And I think it could be a really great, a really great addition, and safety as well, too.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
So, well, I guess, what would be the next steps to go to push something like this through?
Have Scott talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Dina Malakoff.
Hi, everyone. For those of you that don't know, I'm Dina Malakoff, I'm the interim Community Library Manager at the San Dimas Library. And I'm here just to tell you a little bit about what's going on at the library. Well, the best thing that's happening right now is June 2nd, is our Summer Discovery Program that used to be called the Summer Reading Program, but we call it Summer Discovery because we wanna encourage families to do things besides reading. And we have lots of activities that they can do besides reading in order to obtain incentives. So we have a lot of prizes that kids of all ages and adults can win, or obtain just by reading and doing activities. So you do both, so it's a lot of fun. And you can go onto our website, lacountylibrary.org/summer-discovery. And you can either participate online, or go into your library and participate with a paper version of the game. It doesn't matter, either way, you have the same chances to win prizes for doing so. And not only that, but we have a lot more programming going on in the summer as part of our Summer Discovery Program. So the first one we're having is Thursday, June 12th, at 3:00. And that is Magic with Wayne, and that's our kickoff. And it should be a lot of fun, and these are for ages three and up, with bringing a parent with them, or a guardian, or any caregiver. And space is limited, so first come, first served on that one. Also, Thursday, June 26th, we're having Bubble Mania at 3:00 as well. And again, those are for ages three and up. We also have more activities for adults and teens. So we have our normal yarn and stitch program, June 3rd and 17th, at 6:30. But we also have a new kind of program called Journaling for Adults, and that will be on Saturday, June 14th, at 11:00. And another one for adults is Roll for a Poem Game, which is like a fun dice game where adults can play an easy game with dice to help them to write a poem. So it's called Roll for a Poem Game, and that's Saturday, June 28th, at 11:00. Okay, and then we also have some teen programs, you can check all the programs out on our website. And before I leave, I just wanted to say that if any of you guys or know anybody that's looking for jobs, that we have job resources, a lot of them on our website, we're there to help when you come into the library. And we have classes people can take to help them prepare for jobs, computers and hotspots they can use in the library or take home. So it's a good resource if anybody's looking for a career, for their career. Thank you, bye.
Those were all the speaker cards, Mayor.
Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time, other than, if you didn't put in a speaker card, feel free to come up and speak. Seeing none, at this time, I'm gonna call up Scott Wasserman. I've asked the Parks and Rec Director to give us, at each, before each council meeting, before we get there. Right, and we'll do it right after the oral communications, and after those, I've asked him to give us an update on what's going on with Parks and Rec, any future activities coming up. I think sometimes we miss it, and we do it sometimes at the end of the meeting, when most of the people have already gone to bed. So if you don't mind, I'd like to make this a continuous thing, unless one of my council people has some objection to it. Scott, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Wasserman, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'll provide a few updates on some upcoming programs. The first is the Movie in the Park. The city offers one movie in the park, it'll be The Wild Robot, which will be showing on Wednesday, June 11th, at Civic Center Park, at 7:00 PM. The event is free, it's great for the family, and it also coincides with the weekly's farmer's market, which is also at Civic Center Park. So folks can come and enjoy the movie, get something to eat, get some fresh produce, and have a good time. Related to that, we have concerts in the park coming up for our summer. Concerts start, they're every Wednesday, starting June 18th through August 13th. The first concert, scheduled on June 18th, features a group called OC3, which features hits from the 70s, 80s, and 90s. And again, the concert, just like the movie in the park, that's free of charge, coincides with the farmer's market. It's a great time to come out and enjoy the outdoors in the summer with your family. Next, I'd like to promote our Cars and Coffee Event. We have three Cars and Coffees events, Cars and Coffee Events. The first one is scheduled to take place on Saturday, June 21st, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And it's a great time, we usually get between 50 to 75 classic cars. Great time for car enthusiasts to come out, we also provide coffee, free of charge, while supplies last. So we hope to see folks there. This is going to be in the parking lot behind the Walker House. And again, the first Cars and Coffee is June 21st, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Next, we have the Kids Fun Club and Teen City Summer Camp. And the dates for that are June 9th to August 15th. I bring this up because there are still spots available at Ladera Sarah Park, and also for the teen, the teen club. There are also spots available there, that's held at the Recreation Center. The program costs $150 per week. It's a great supervised, healthy activities for your kids between the hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They take excursions, there are fun activities in the park, we serve lunch, and we hope to see you there. And again, there are some spots available at Ladera Sarah Park and at the Recreation Center for the teen club. Teen City, rather. And finally, the Skate Park Dedication Event. We had a gentleman speak about the skate park just a little while ago. The date we ended out with is going to be Sunday, October 19th, 10:00 AM at Pioneer Park. I apologize for the Sunday scheduling, but this was the only date where everybody could really attend that was supposed to be there. We got Sheriff Luna, Supervisor Catherine Barker, and of course, the entire city council and the Campbell family. So we're really excited about that. That will commence at 10:00 AM. And again, that's going to be the date for the dedication of the skate park for former Deputy David Campbell, who served in our San Dimas station. And Mr. Mayor and council, that concludes my update of upcoming programs.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the short notice, sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? We'll move on to consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion.
Move approval. Second.
Any comments? All approv, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, consent calendar is approved, 5-0. At this time, I'm going to close the city council meeting, and I'm gonna reopen, open the Housing Authority meeting. Staff?
Good evening, Executive Director and members of the Housing Authority Board. I'm Brandon Slater, I'm the Associate Engineer for the Department of Public Works, here to present on the Charter Oak Mobile Home Estates North Property Wall Project. The Charter Oak Mobile Home Estates North Property Wall Project would replace approximately 1,300 linear feet of existing chain-link fencing along the north property line adjacent to the railroad track. This project includes a six-foot-tall decorative slumpstone block wall with a two-foot-high wrought iron attachment totaling eight feet tall, or eight feet in height. The wall also includes pilasters every 24 feet and incorporates new security lighting within the wall. The project requires the Housing Authority Board to appropriate an additional $418,458 from the Housing Authority Trustee Administration Fund, 113, to bring the fiscal year total budget to $1,418,458. These funds will offset expenses already incurred, as well as provide a project budget of $1,318,040, which includes construction of the Mobile Home Estates North Property Wall, flagging and permit fees, engineering services and inspection, as well as contingency. Plans were submitted to and approved by the Housing and Community Development Division of Codes and Standards, known as HCD, as well as the Southern California Regional Rail Authority, which added time to the design. This project was formally bid, and the city received a total of five formal bids. The lowest responsible bidder is Bedrock Group, Inc., and their bid was $1,038,040. This project will increase the security of the fence, provide additional lighting, while providing an aesthetically pleasing fence for the residents in the community. Staff recommends the Housing Authority approve the recommendations as listed in the staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions the board has at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just comment, I just thank you for doing this. I think that, you know, the council, obviously, there was a time when this was every meeting, this particular property. And I think this was one of the things that when some of us walked to that community was in dire need of repair. And so I'm very happy to see this project and all the work that went into it, and I think it'll increase the safety and security of that property, as well as the safety of people who, for whatever reason, find themselves on those train tracks, at least through accessing that property or otherwise. So thanks again for doing that.
I also just wanted to say, I think this wall is going to look great. It's going to help mitigate the noise from the train, and it addresses improved safety and security for the residents that live there. They're very, very much looking forward to it. I was able to reach out to staff to ask this question, but for the benefit of the public, if you could just let us know, about how long do you think this project will take to complete?
I think construction is anticipated to take about four months.
Okay.
After the award, we'll have to do contracts as well, so hopefully, we can start probably beginning of July, and hopefully towards end of summer or fall, have this constructed.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Yeah, just for information, some people might be sitting at home saying, "Why is the city doing this?" You all, the reality is Charter Oak Mobile Home Park is owned by you, the community. The Housing Authority has the responsibility for it, but it actually is owned by the Housing Authority, which represents the city of San Dimas. So you're actually putting a wall in a property that you own. So, and it was in dire need, and it's one of those things, we have the railroad track to the north of it, and it creates a major problem for, you know, unfortunately for homeless, wander into the park and it's been, created some real issues. Now it's gonna have this nice, beautiful wall, and unfortunately, things are expensive. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval as recommended by staff.
Second thought.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries, 5-0. Motion carries, 5-0. At this point, I'll close the Housing Authority meeting and reopen the regular City Council meeting. We have a public hearing here. Introduce Ordinance 1326, consideration of a city-initiated multiple code text in Title 18, Title, Chapter 18.
Good eve-- good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Yasmin DeBuys, Assistant Planner. Before you tonight, for consideration is Municipal Code Text Amendment 23-05, which is a city-initiated text amendment regarding the tree preservation ordinance. The text amendment looks to exempt single-family zone properties and single-family properties within some specific plans from the ordinance. This is with the exception of areas owned or managed by HOAs and areas located within certain open space scenic and slope easements. This amendment also includes one associated cleanup item that will be discussed later in the presentation. On the screen, you will see a timeline regarding this project. This code amendment was initially discussed through an applicant-initiated request to exempt SP 11 from some of the requirements of the ordinance. That request was denied, but triggered the beginning of a citywide amendment to the ordinance. Most recently, staff was given direction by City Council to exempt all single-family zone properties from the ordinance. This was reviewed by Planning Commission on April 17, 2025, and recommended for approval with three additional items. The ordinance as drafted outlined specific conservation areas that would not be exempt from the ordinance. This includes HOA common areas, open spaces, scenic easements, slope easements, and HOA maintained areas. It also includes single-family lots located within open space scenic easements and slope easements. The proposed language was developed after the hired environmental consultant, SOMAS, determined that exempting all single-family properties and not protecting the areas listed would require additional secret reveal. This would be in the form of a mitigated negative declaration. But by protecting these conservation areas, it can be justified through a notice of exemption that the heavily wooded areas within single-family neighborhoods would stay preserved, and this would not require additional mitigation measures. This addresses City Council's main objective of exempting a majority of single-family properties from the ordinance. Staff would like to note that although these properties are to remain protected, that does not mean they cannot remove trees. This just means that these lots would have to follow current protocol and make required findings through a tree permit application. The following slides provide examples of these conservation areas. This slide is an example of a single-family zone property in SP 11 that has an open space easement along the side and rear yards. In this example, the property owner would be permitted to remove trees within the developable area outlined in green without permits. However, all other trees in the open space easement areas would require a permit for removal. This is an example of an HOA-maintained area on a single-family lot. This property is located along Calle Frandoza, and the rear portion is located on a hillside swill or V ditch that is maintained by the HOA, not the individual property owner. Removal of any trees in this area circled would require a permit. Any other tree located on land that is maintained by the individual property owner can be removed without permits. Here's an example of an HOA scenic easement area. This is the Villa Verdi Ridge HOA along Puente Avenue. Any removal of trees in this area circled would require a tree permit from the city. While drafting this text amendment, staff came across an issue with code consistency and the request of City Council. The zoning code has individual chapters for each specific plan, and some of these specific plans specifically call out environmental-sensitive areas that must be preserved. This slide is an example that depicts Specific Plan 7. As seen on the map, it calls out major slopes and open spaces that know existing trees to be preserved. If staff exempted all single-family properties, the tree ordinance would be in conflict with various sections of the code. This is another example of Specific Plan 4 that denotes scenic easements on single-family properties. The easement is delineated with the letter D on the map. As mentioned before, there's one associated cleanup item that is part of this Municipal Code Text Amendment. The position Director of Development Services no longer exists within the city, so it is being replaced with Director of Community Development. In addition, staff is currently working on a comprehensive code amendment to make this change throughout the code. This item was heard before Planning Commission on April 17, 2025. The Planning Commission had three recommendations, along with their recommendation for approval to City Council. The first recommendation made by Planning Commission was a revised review authority. At the time of the Planning Commission meeting, the deletion of the Development Plan Review Board, also known as DPRB, had not yet been heard by City Council. So at that time, the removal of three or less trees was reviewed by the Director of Community Development, and four or more trees was reviewed by DPRB. Since then, City Council approved the deletion of DPRB through MCTA 24-11, which altered the review authority for tree permits. The removal of three or less trees is now reviewed administratively by staff, and four or more trees is reviewed by the Director of Community Development. Therefore, this recommendation by Planning Commission has been addressed already by the deletion of DPRB. The second recommendation made by Planning Commission was the continued preservation of front yard areas. They determined that residential front yards impact visual appearance of neighborhoods. They recommend that any tree located within the front yard area of a single-family property, regardless of species, and that its 15 inches or greater in diameter be protected. The diameter would now be measured at 54 inches above ground level, because this recommendation entails revising the definition of mature significant tree in the ordinance to include the new measurement height of 54 inches. This also complies with general arboricultural standards. The final recommendation by Planning Commission is the non-exempting of properties located within the single-family hillside or SFH zone. They determined that these areas were made to ensure that development blends with the natural terrain. This slide shows all single-family hillside properties in the city, not including Villa Verdi Park, which totals 126 lots. Figure 1 shows all properties that are south of Oak and Gate Drive that are within the SFH zone. The second figure shows south of Deansa Heights and north of Putting Stone. And the final image is north of the city along Terrebonne Avenue, which is also the SFH zone. With that said, staff and Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt Ordinance 1326, which does not include the recommendations made by Planning Commission. If City Council wishes to include these recommendations of the preservation of front yards and the non-exempting of single-family hillside properties, staff can revise the ordinance and bring it back to City Council for hearing. This concludes the presentation. Staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question, if I may. First, my question is, I'm curious, the Director of Development Services, was this a position that was eliminated, or did it just get renamed to the Director of Community Development? I'm just curious as to what the responsibilities were of Development Services, and why we eliminated it.
Before, it was Community Service. And so there was a title change, I think, when Larry Stevens was here.
Okay, so it's the same job, it's just the title changed.
Correct.
Eric, we're going to open a public hearing, then you can come back to your questions.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Is a public hearing anyone wishing to speak concerning this matter? Please step up to the podium.
Well, I live on Villa Verdi, right there with those trees that are on the street. And I was trying to listen to you, but those trees, that's another concern. I didn't bring them both up at the same time. But we need to, those trees are huge. And during, in January, a huge branch fell off one of those trees and blocked my front yard, but they were very quickly, they removed it. But those trees have not been trimmed. And what are we going to, I would like to know, what are you going to do about, before you vote something in like this, about how we're going to maintain those trees that are right on Villa Verdi, in front of our homes?
We're not sure, staff's not sure which trees in particular we're talking about. Are there public trees or private trees, unfortunately?
No, they're not on, they're--
These are the trees that are located on the berm. Not, they're not on the resident property lines. They're on the city-owned berm.
Okay. Scott Wasserman, the Director of Parks and Rec, just informed me that those are public trees, and he can talk to you about that. We're talking about private trees only today.
Okay.
For this issue.
We'll close the public hearing.
So, one thing I did want to encourage my colleagues, I'll just take a position on this now. I do think that the recommendations from the Planning Commission are worth looking at. One of the pictures that was shown, Image 1, if we can put it back on the screen, that's actually my neighborhood. So if you were to look at Figure 1, properties along Oak and Gate Avenue, I'm actually like right around the corner there. My house is visible on that. I think it is actually something I hadn't thought about, but in the case of this particular hillside, it faces all of Villa Verdi. So in other words, if the HOA were to just start, like, randomly cutting down all kinds of trees, it wouldn't, thinking through it, and this is again, my HOA, so it's, you know, collective property, but it wouldn't just impact our HOA, our community. You would basically have the southern half of San Dimas looking over the Antonovich Trail. They would see massive changes to their view. It would completely change how the area would look in that particular, from that particular vantage point. So, thinking through that, and it wasn't something that really occurred to me, I do think that that recommendation at least is worth consideration, given the implication it can have, not just for the community, but for the larger city. And I say this as a stakeholder, saying that I would want to have some control over what goes on in my neighborhood, but also recognizing, yeah, that actually would be pretty bad if we just decided, without city consultation, to cut down all those trees, and it would impact views and the perception of everyone who's able to visually see it from across the ridge. And then in terms of the other recommendations that the Planning Commission had, I actually also think that those are worth consideration as well. Maybe not for this round, but at least coming back for future council discussion or study session if we need something more in depth. But I do think that they're well thought out, and they're pieces of information that I hadn't really necessarily considered, like this one, for example. So, that's my thought on that.
I'll just say that, one, I'm not in disagreement. To be very candid, I, to me, I'm not prepared to vote on this at this point. I think the, this is clear as mud to me, because there's too many conditions that have been laid out that I think, you know, would be helpful to have a little bit more of a substantive discussion. And the other thing that changed since this all came up was defensible space in Zone Zero. And I'm curious how all of that plays into what we're talking about right now, and whether or not there is some discussion regarding that, and whether or not council is even aware of what that is. But, you know, Fire Chief Maroni talked a lot about that, and he's now a believer. I don't know whether or not, you know, we need to do something at this point or not, but if you haven't looked at the fire hazard map, I mean, I know I live in a high fire danger zone. And I think the majority, when you look at the city, most of us are living in a at-risk area. So, you know, from my perspective, you know, I probably would want to take this back to a study session to go through just some of the specifics, like when we talk about, you know, just breaking this out between the HOA and single-family conditions, and then pointing out like, you know, and I don't know if a table just makes this easier to understand, but, you know, language like "all trees should be protected", but there are a few cases in this chapter where this does not apply, and they are as follows. Trees located within blah, 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 with the exception of the following. So, it's like you have to really follow this along in the rabbit hole to get to the place to follow open space scenic easements and/or slope easements. And there's different conditions that I would have questions about wherein there are homeowners that own slopes. And so there's easements that are there in those conditions that exist, but the actual slope that's not developed, as you pointed out in some of these other things, you know, those are private property responsibility. So, you know, I just have questions about that. But I think the other piece of this is Zone Zero, and I think that some of what I've read in here and how this all plays doesn't really talk about defensible space. And I don't know if that's something, if we're going to do this anyways, that we want to have that conversation, or at least go through it and say, hey, we're either good, or let's flush it out a little bit and see if it's worth incorporating, because this is quite a bit of work to make the change nonetheless. So, that's where I'm at with that.
That actually raises a good point. When you were, when you were looking at this, did you take into consideration different recommendations from the Fire Department about brush or risk hazard or anything else besides just kind of the views? Or was this purely just, you know?
We did not at this time. The map, when we were looking at this, the map had just come out.
Got it, okay.
And the plan itself had just come out also of what they were doing. There was drafts, but nothing was official yet. But what we did say in our practice was that if you actually received a letter from the Fire Department saying that the tree actually had to be removed, then that was an exemption, and we would allow, which the code allows for exempting those types of situations for those trees to be removed at the time. But if it was just a letter of, you know, not specifically saying these trees, then we would say you need to submit an application for it. But Fire Department approval or Fire Department requirement, we would remove. If you got a letter from your insurance company saying you need to remove these, it wasn't sufficient. It was more of a, we need something from the Fire Department. That's the way we were treating it at the time.
I wonder if it makes sense maybe to, one is to have a presentation from the Fire Department regarding Zone Zero, just for the purposes of council, to understand just policy considerations related to that, and what that means to us with the fire hazard maps. And then after that, then maybe have a study session to get back into the policy piece of this, if it is something that we have an interest in incorporating into what we're doing now, or not, as well as to parse out some of these conditions, I think, just a little bit to get the questions answered, and then come back and finish this out.
We did, on a separate issue, talk to the Fire Department. We talked to three different agencies or departments within the Fire Department, and each of them was kind of saying, oh, that's not us. You need to, because it was regarding a tree replacement plan for a hillside property. And each time we spoke to the Fire Department, it was, oh, that's not us, that's this department. And then when we talked to them, that's not us, that's this department. And we, so we were getting the runaround recently on them. We were asking them for their assistance in what would be appropriate for a tree replacement on a hillside.
I think it's good our assistant chiefs back here right now.
And so they can lead us in the right direction, because everybody was giving us the runaround, so.
I just want to take a moment and acknowledge staff. You did an incredible job bringing forward what council brought to you originally. And then Planning Commission, you guys took what we were thinking, and you made it a heck of a lot better. So, thank you, which now gives me a lot more to think about. So I'm not quite ready to move forward on this, but my mind is getting in a direction that I think we're getting a lot closer. I like the things that Planning Commission brought forward. You know, when we were talking about it originally, we must have spent half of our time discussing slopes, and we were worried about the safety of it and all that. So going ahead and setting that aside, I think, was a brilliant idea to keep the integrity of our hillsides. Keeping the front yards with having to go ahead and go through a permit process, I can also support. If we, I want to stay out of people's backyards. I think people should be able to do what they need to do in a backyard. However, if we do that, I do want to take into consideration what SOMAS had recommended, and I would recommend that we do put together a short list of whatever trees we wish to preserve to maybe stay in line with, what is it, SB 1334? With the oak tree preservation or whatnot. And whatever that ends up being can be-- And whatever that ends up being can be specific to our city, but if we're going to allow, which I want, backyards to be what people choose to do, we probably should take a little step just to make sure that we're protecting those trees, because unfortunately, we can't go back, right?
Louis brought up a good topic that I don't know we've previously addressed before, and that's a notification from your insurance company about a particular problem tree, and I don't know, in my opinion, I would kind of want to also exempt those. If your insurance company, we, we run into this quite often in Via Verde with trees that have grown at an angle, like over somebody's property, and their concern is, you know, a good rain or whatever, and, you know, now this 95-foot slanted pine tree is gonna come down on my house. And in a couple of instances, I think in the Via Verde Ridge Association, that's happened. And it's caused great concern for those residents that have those trees that are planted probably too close to their property line boundary, and now those trees are much bigger than they were when they were planted, and they're just unmanageable. So, if, if my insurance company's telling me that that tree's a danger, and that they're not gonna insure my house, or my rates are gonna go through the roof, I would 100% be in favor of exempting those and allowing those to be removed. As far as front yards go, I'm not a fan of, of having permits to remove my own tree. And I'll give you an example, and I'm probably gonna wrap myself out here, but when I bought my house, there's two palm trees, that were the messiest, ugliest trees that I've ever seen in my life. They would have been over 15 inches in diameter, or, yeah, diameter, at the time, but they were knocking over a, a wall and lifting up my driveway, and I had somebody knock on my door, and they said, hey, do you need tree trimming? I said, I sure do. Those things need to go. And those, those came down. I didn't get a permit, because I didn't think I needed one, because they were my trees. And to be honest with you, I don't think anybody has a right to look at what I have in my front yard. And I think that's the, to me, that's what the issue boils down to. Does somebody have a right to look at the property that I own, even if it's destroying the property that I own? And to me, I don't think that's, that's the case at all. So, I, I, I see the, the argument, and, and there, there are likely instances where a otherwise, you know, perfectly fine tree that I might find acceptable in, in my yard would get cut down, because whoever owns the house doesn't want it there. But I don't know that I'm prepared as, you know, a, as the, the big government to say that they can't do that. As far as the SOMAS recommendations, I think those are reasonable, especially as it comes, as it pertains to maintaining the, the integrity of a slope and preventing slippage during heavy rainfall. So I, I think those sloped areas, as we've discussed previously when this issue came up, do require some careful consideration and thoughtfulness. And the, the open spaces, like the areas that you're talking about, are something to consider as well. I'm open to that, although it, it does create another challenge. Again, if, if the, if it's HOA trees in that instance, and the majority of the HOA agrees that a particular tree needs to go, then I don't know how I feel about the HOA having to go through a process with us to get that removed. They have a board in place, and there's accountability there. And I think going through the city, or forcing them to go through the city to maintain their tree inventory, kind of creates a disincentive for them to plant more trees. So if it does, if a tree does need to get removed because it's diseased, or it's creating a hazard, and they're allowed to remove it, it kind of creates a disincentive for them to plant another one, because then that's going to create an issue for them down the road, which may cause them another headache, so why plant it? That's, that's something I brought up in the past as well. Basically, these, these HOAs maintain a robust inventory of trees, like you mentioned, that are, that add to the beautification of neighborhoods, whether it's the neighborhood that they belong to, or, or surrounding neighborhoods, but I think they need to be able to maintain that in a way that makes sense for them, because they're the ones that are bankrolling it. And, yeah, I, I, I might be able to get my head around something like that, I just, as of right now, just completely, as a blanket rule saying, now that HOA's gotta go through, the city kinda causes me a little bit of heart-
Yeah, I'm not, if I may, can I, I, philosophically, I'm actually with you on everything you've said. If you remember, one of the first things when I came on council was, I wanted to revisit the whole idea around restrictions around parking. And then what I realized pretty fast is that people, although they may complain about having to get an overnight permit and everything else, they wanted it because it preserved a certain look of the city. And I've heard that over and over and over again. And so, while philosophically, I have kind of more of a laissez-faire view of what people should be able to do with their property, having heard from many, many people, some of whom are sitting in the audience, that one of the things that distinguishes San Dimas is the way it looks, I'm much more sensitive to that. And that's why, when it comes to trees in front yards, or trees, you know, in HOA property, having that extra review where people can look at it and say, yep, we think that this is the right way to go, I'm not opposed to it. It doesn't mean that they can't remove the tree, it just means that there's just one extra layer of review, so that way if people wanna have a city look the way they want it to, then there's, you know, one extra step there.
I hear you there.
Yeah.
I think the way I'm looking at it is, that the HOA itself is a governing body.
Sure.
And it is that extra layer. And I think that there's an assumption that, in general, that if you remove the restrictions on an HOA cutting trees down, that they're gonna cut down, it's gonna be, as Ryan would say, fern gully, and they're gonna cut down every dang tree that they own, I just don't think that that's gonna be the case.
Well, and, and I can tell you, in my experience, sitting on an HOA board, I'm an indentured servitude there, I feel, I can't get off the bloody thing, as most others who get involved with it, is that if you have the flexibility to plant and remove, then I can tell you, most HOA boards want to plant trees. Like, in fact, people want to do that. I do think it's the, it's the restriction that makes it harder, because I could just tell the arborist, hey, that tree's not thriving, this isn't working out, let's put something that's gonna do better, and make it happen. But, or, or that tree is an olive tree, and we didn't know, like, that was gonna, you know, it didn't get treated, the fruit is creating problems, let's solve that. And, you know, sometimes that extra step is a step that's sometimes viewed as bureaucratic or delayed, in an HOA meeting that might meet once a month or quarterly, you know, they're trying to get it done, and it's like, who's gonna go to the city, the management company? Probably not, or if, or the reality is, if they are, it's not gonna be in a timely manner by the time you get it to your arborist or your landscaper. So I, I, you know, again, I, I kinda go back to, I'd love to flush this out in a study session, because I actually, I think there is a balance to this particular topic that could be struck, at least as it relates to the, the HOA piece. I do agree, though, on private property, single-family. I have mixed feelings about, you know, the, the piece. I mean, I'm, I am 100% in agreement on backyards, front yards. You know, there was a discussion, I think two years ago or so, the council was having about a tree, and I have to remember the specifics, but somebody trimmed a tree, and I guess it was in an easement. You remember that? It was over there on the west side of town.
In, in his district.
Yeah.
Eric's district.
And then it was like privately maintained, but I guess a, an easement tree or a planted tree, and it turned into a big, like, kerfuffle of nonsense, and it really, at the end of the day, the homeowner was just trying to solve a problem that they had with the overgrowth of that tree. And I think that that, those are the times, to me, that when we have these discussions, get frustrating. You know, and, and that's not even removing the tree, that was just doing maintenance. But I guess Jeff, and just in terms of procedure, from my own knowledge, I know we may continue the discussion, but if we were to go, would we suspend the public hearing, and then do all the stuff in the in-between, and then come back? Or could we take this to a study session, but request the fire presentation, and then come back to this? What's, mechanically, what do we do if we were to do that?
I think the council's considering enough discussion. You wanna go into enough discussion that we should just re-notice the public hearing when we're ready to come back to council? So we don't need to pick the exact date, it'll come back at this point. Just continue it, and then direct staff to schedule a study session, or further meetings when you would like to.
Okay, yeah, I, I would just say to Steph that, like, one thing if, and, you know, I don't know where we're gonna go with, with everybody here, but one thing that would be helpful to me is, you know, and as Rachel pointed out, like, I do like some of the things that Planning Commission has recommended, I just would like to understand, one, as it's currently proposed, in a table format, as it relates to single-family homeowners, and then for HOA entities, what does it mean, you know, when it's on a slope? What does it mean when it's not on a slope, when it's flatland, if you will? Like, what, when are they exempted from it, and when are they not? Like, if that's, you know, on a, on a X, Y axis, however you check the conditions as they may be? And I think the other thing is, is, you know, if we were to adopt some of the recommendations from the planning commission, what, what specifically does that change? Like, just a side-by-side comparison, I guess, as we've done in some of the study sessions, like, what is it as it's proposed? What is it with the planning commission's recommendations? And then I'd like to try to flush out some of the points that Councilmember Weber brought up, because I, I do think there is a discussion on the front yard versus not, in the HOA piece, when it, when it's appropriate, when it's not, and, and maybe there is a balance. And the insurance thing, I think's very important. That proof of, proof of demonstrating proof that you've been instructed to remove a tree, I think for, for that reason, I think's important. And I'd like to know about the, the fire hazard, you know, zone zero stuff as well, how that plays in.
Just, just a clarification, because I was having trouble reading on 254. You don't need, I, I can't tell, do you, do you need a permit if a tree is dying or dead, or is that exempt?
It's exempt.
Because it wasn't clear to me, it just said, does not require an arborist's report, so.
It's exempt. We still request that, you still submit just the application and a picture showing that it's dead.
Or dying.
Or dying.
That's also, okay.
That's very obvious that it's dying.
Okay.
And then we give you an approval right then and there.
And then, although the fire thing is exempt, insurance currently is not, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then additionally, what I would love to hear, that would help me, is those, I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around use cases. So examples, perhaps the planning commission had some in mind, when they said it needs to go through a review for front yard trees. Are there cases or examples that made them propose that or think that? Because in all the cases I can think of, the city, where there would be a, a public interest, the city owns those trees in the front yard. So I'd be curious to hear, like, what prompted them to say privately owned trees in private yards, that should also be on the list, here's why we thought that this was important to have as part of this process? I would, I think that'd be helpful.
It, it appeared at the time of the meeting of Planning Commission, that they were trying to, I think, preserve more of the tree ordinance than what was directed by council.
Got it, okay.
At that time, we directed them that council had directed staff to-
Got it. Well, if they are able to come up with examples, because hearing Councilman Vienna's example of something that happened where somebody trimmed a tree and it caused a lot of issues, like, hearing those stories helps me understand how this would work in the real world.
Well, maybe I could try to, if you don't, if I could get a couple minutes. What they were saying basically is that, right now, in the front yard, these, an eight-inch oak and a 10-inch tree, right now require permit, and it's measured from 36 inches above the ground. And the, the planning commission said, you know what, let's still try to save and allow for the larger trees, the big trees, let's go to 15 inches in diameter. So basically, an oak that's eight-inch now can be cut down, but if it's 15, it's a significant tree. So let's preserve the significant trees in the front yard, because aesthetically, they do create some kind of a visual effect to the front, to the community. So they felt those trees that are 15 inches in diameter should be preserved, because those are really considered, to them, mature trees. So that was the basis of the whole discussion of preserving trees in the front yard, that it would allow for smaller-sized trees, which we consider mature currently, to be removed. So it would allow more flexibility, and also the measurement wouldn't be now at 54 inches versus at the 36. So typically, trunks tend to be straight or thicker at the bottom, so it would allow more trees to be actually cut that would be considered smaller, and with more of the larger, significant trees to be preserved. That was the planning commission's thought.
How did the 15-inch come about?
They just felt like 15 inches would be a large tree. It was, it was just discussion, no scientific study, other than, this seems pretty large.
I'm just disturbed it took you this long to use props. How long have you had those?
I think that's about the size of a large pizza across the street.
Should've started with those.
We started, next time. So, and to help staff, I think, all this information is really good information for us to understand, but if we can get also a consensus of, if there's things on, that Planning Commission brought up, that you do not wanna discuss, just so that we can hone in, hone in on little subjects that you actually wanna talk about, so we're not going over here, and we're not going over there, let's try to focus this, because this would be number-
I love staff, but I'm just gonna tell you, it is a packed agenda tonight, and honestly, I am not personally opposed to any of the Planning Commission's recommendations, I'm just not ready to, to flush it out until I fully understand how it impacts what been, what has been proposed. So unfortunately, I, I couldn't help towards consensus on this at this time.
I, I think all of us are in the same boat, from what I'm hearing, it's that we just want more information and more context for recommendations. I, that's the, that's the main thing that's coming for me, is I have questions, you know, for example, exempt species to consider? They have eucalyptus tree of heaven palm, uh, queen palm, white ash, et cetera. What was the criteria for that? You know, what, how did they come up with those trees? How did it, how did it get on there, and then, et cetera? What other trees are part of that list, besides those four?
Yeah, the environmental, the environmental consultant that we had hired, that was their kind of recommendation, but it wasn't our recommendation at this time.
Got it, okay.
So I hope this is helpful, but I would add, I think the discussion is front yards, I think it sounds like everyone wants to hear a little bit more about that. And then I would like to add, if we need a list of any protected species in order to just be in line, if we are giving people more free rein in the backyard, I would wanna discuss that.
Wait a minute. These words get very tricky, as we learned with black walnut trees. So, protected, you mean, or endangered, or are we saying-
I think that's why we need to go into a study about it. I don't think we're prepared to do anything right now. I did look to see what other cities had, and there was four trees on there. Like I mentioned when I first started, we can choose what works best for our city, but I wanna make sure that we're in line with county or state ordinances that are larger than us, because I want it to be very clear what people can do or not do.
It's up to the individual agencies, so it'd be up to the city to create their own ordinance to protect the trees that they want to. We did look into that. There's no, like, there's no law or agency that would say you cannot remove a tree in San Dimas, as, like, an oak tree in particular. They are considered rare and more endangered, but they're not protected where you cannot remove it. It's up to the individual agencies. So, some people might say, in LA County, you can't remove a tree, but it's unincorporated areas of LA County that are protected, stuff like that. So San Dimas can create their own list, or not.
Sounds like there's lots of questions and lots of things still on people's mind. My question to the council is, is this a city council, meaning the forum, that you guys wanna sit down and hash this out, or do we wanna do it in some type of other forum, like a study session, where questions can be directed and asked?
Yeah, I'd like to see a study session.
Same.
I, I think that's the best way to get a consensus among all of us.
I, I could agree with that. I just wanted to say, I came on the council in 2007, this discussion was started in 2020, or 2007, or maybe '10, or '11, or something like that. I've always believed, along with other council members who were here in the past, that we need to not be in people's backyards. And a lot of this discussion started over trees that were not, you know, the most proper or pro tree, meaning, one, it became very obvious that eucalyptus trees were a problem child, and that people were having problems in their backyards. So we started these- So we started these discussions with eucalyptus trees. Well, now, since 2007, those eucalyptus trees have grown just a little bit further. And I don't know if anybody else is, maybe I'm wrong, but it certainly seems to me like wind events have increased totally in this community, in this community and other communities. And we saw what happened. And, uh, as those trees get larger and larger in people's backyards, um, patios, houses, roofs become more endangered. So I'm glad to see us moving along, but, you know, it's been a lot of years since we started talking just about eucalyptus trees in people's backyards. So I'd like to see us move forward with this, and I would like staff to set up this, uh, if, if that's the consensus, a study session, and give me an idea about how long you think you'll be ready before you just, I know there's a lot of information you're starting to hear now, but I certainly don't want to hear it in 2026.
Can we get two hours for study session?
Yeah, I actually would submit that this is probably a, not a Tuesday meeting, or if it is, it's, you know, probably like a Thursday, or we can, or a Wednesday that we can spend the time, because this is complicated. And the other thing I would just suggest to council is, you know, look at, look at the Eaton Fire and, and look at Woosley and look at the Palisades, like, and when you look at all of these things, the station fire, like with the Foothill Interface where we're at, and if you look at this fire hazard map, I, I was just talking to, uh, Councilmember Weber about this, that, you know, embers and, and, and look at the, the travel capability of that, it would not be hard for a fire to start, you know, as it had during the Morris dam, Station Morris Fire, uh, it started, if you recall. And for whatever reason, with the right conditions coming this way, um, it wouldn't be hard for that to get to Walnut Creek or to Benelli to create a significant problem in this city.
Yeah.
And have two major problems, um, that would threaten a significant amount of homes. So I mean, I know we've, you know, really worked hard with the urban forest and all the things, but, uh, there's also a lot of brush, and there's a lot of other things in our community besides these trees, um, that we need to think about. And I just would, you know, suggest we all bear that in mind as we look at this and look at the Zone Zero Initiative and have a real discussion about it, because these trees have been growing for decades and, you know, and many of them are going to stay, you know, we're going to protect those. But I think, uh, it, it is a real thing. I mean, there, there's real loss that's been incurred, and I think it's a real thing for us to think about moving forward.
All right, thank you.
I would, I would posit that some of those trees we should not be protecting, you know, like the eucalyptus are incredibly, what is it, inflammatory? I can't think of the right word.
Inflammable.
Yeah, inflammable. Um, and the fact that, you know, I learned looking at this map, my house is in a very high fire zone. I could tell you that when I walk down, I see tons of eucalyptus trees, which makes me a little more worried. So having a study session where we're looking at it through the lens of fire responsibility, insurance responsibility, and then aesthetic responsibility, I think is the right balance. Um, and the reason why I brought up the hillside is that I didn't really appreciate how much a hillside could impact one's view, until if you remember, what was it? I think it was before I was on council, but there was some, someone who, um, tried to carve, uh, some sort of a road in the foothills. Do you remember that? You could just see a giant scar.
The trail.
I didn't realize.
Trail.
Yeah, the trail. I didn't realize that, you know, you could, you could do that and it would be just so obvious. So that's why when I was thinking about the hillsides, you know, that's what popped into my head, and said, do we, maybe we should think about some mitigations here or reviews, because even something small like a little bulldozer carving a trail, if it's not done well, you, you, you could see it from everyone. It really is quite noticeable, so.
I think there's, uh, one thing we're certain that, uh, we'll have to balance, and that's the, the people element of this. And, uh, there's, there's a saying about people, that they, there's two things that people don't like. That's the way things are, and they don't like change. So those things don't really go well together, but, uh, I'm sure we'll, with a study session and some time, we can, uh, we can get through it.
Do you have to, a consensus to continue, okay, or do we need to vote?
Yeah, you could just table this item and direct staff to bring it back to a study session at a time of, at whatever time council or staff chooses.
Right, and I would just ask on top of that, that we have a presentation from the fire department regarding the Zone Zero Initiative, uh, and just what that means before we have the study session. At the same time?
No, no, before.
Before.
Yeah, they can do that. That would be, I think, productive at a council meeting, because it's important for the public to understand all of that. I think that's more of a PSA issue, but it'll be good for us to understand the policy implication when we go into the study session.
And then we'll do ours after, at a later date.
Yes, sir.
Well, don't, don't we have something coming up with the fire department and concerning, like the Eaton Fire and?
That's in 2026.
Yeah, that, that, we're still trying to schedule that, because I had a lot of different players that were trying to get together for that presentation.
We would do something with the fire department before then, then?
Correct, that's what we're planning on doing, yeah. And if council's, uh, okay, this could potentially be an off-council meeting, Wednesday, Thursday, two-hour meeting.
We have a couple of things to discuss anyway.
But the fire presentation at a council meeting.
Fire, yes, I'm talking, yes, correct.
All right. Everybody okay with me table it? Okay, we'll table this matter till a date uncertain.
Mr. Mayor, um, I would just, out of respect for a couple residents that I think are waiting specifically for a parcel tax issue in Open Space Maintenance District, I might propose we could take that out of order maybe, unless you guys want to hang out.
Public hearing three, number three? Is that what you're talking about?
Right, I believe that's the item you guys want to talk about, right?
We're really interested in the fire issue too.
Okay.
I don't know about San Dimas, but we're in San Dimas, we're in the fire six miles away, maybe we can't, or we can't fire through his house again. Okay, so you... So Terry, I, I understand, so are you okay if we just continue as we go? And, or do you want us to jump ahead to the, to that? Okay, thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Besides that, she needs to be out of here on time to get to La Via Kitchen by 11 tomorrow.
She's got an appointment at your office?
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing, number two, presentation of compliance with the Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3, Staff Vacancies and City Recruitment and Retention Efforts to Comply with the New Legal Obligation. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director. The purpose of this public hearing is to comply with Assembly Bill 2561 and Government Code Section 3502.3, which went to effect January 20, or January 1st, 2025. Uh, this bill, this legislation requires public agencies to report on their vacancy rates, recruitment efforts, and any obstacles in hiring practices that may contribute to vacancy rates, um, during this public hearing. Uh, to date, the city currently has zero vacancies, um, for their budgeted full-time positions. At the time of the lookback period, or at the point of January 1st, 2025, when this bill went to effect, we did have one vacancy, uh, which has now been, um, fulfilled. And during the past year, from January 1 to December 24, we had eight full-time recruitments, which three of those were filled as, uh, through with internal recruitments, and the other five from external hires. Uh, the main purpose of this bill is really to present, present a, in a public forum, so that everyone's aware of where we're at with our positions that are budgeted, are they being filled, are they actively being recruited? Are cities using this budgeted positions as a tool to make expenditures look grandiose, greater than they are, when they know they're not going to fulfill these positions? Um, in our case, we are obviously meeting all our, our budgeted positions, we're trying to fill them all and keep them filled. Uh, and also in an effort to make sure that staff isn't being overworked, because we are not filling backfilling positions and creating overburdensome, um, responsibilities for our employee base. And the last kind of component of this is how are we doing with developing our employees and bringing them up into taking over positions in the future? And I just did kind of a curs, uh, a cursory review, just over the time period I've been here, which is about 10 years, of how many of our positions currently were filled by positions, or by individuals who had a position within the city and then were promoted up. And I was able to come up with this list of our city manager, three directors, and a city clerk, six managers, six supervisors, three management aides, three rec coordinators, two assistant positions, two analyst positions, a senior planner, an associate engineer, and two senior analysts. So we've been very active in developing our employees, making, or making these available promotion opportunities available for them, and seeing them succeed at when they've gone into these positions. So with that, that completes my report, and our recommendation is for you to receive and file.
Good job, good job. Okay, we're, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the city council?
No questions, but I'll move that we receive and file the staff report.
I'll second, and, uh, say, Michael, you did an outstanding job as usual.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain the motion.
Second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, file a report. All right, that, that took about two seconds, so we're going to move on to where Terry needs to be. Public hearing number three is approval resolution setting a citywide landscape parcel tax for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Scott Wasserman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, as the mayor mentioned, this item pertains to the citywide landscape parcel tax for 2025, 26. Little bit of background, in 1997, residents approved by a 71% affirmative vote their support for ordinance 1086, adopting a special parcel tax to be levied against all properties in the city. Revenues collected are exclusively used to improve and maintain public parks, parkways, street medians, and trees, essentially all of the areas in the public space, uh, where there's landscaping. Ordinance 1086 requires that a special tax shall be set annually by the city council following a public hearing. The recommended action for this item is to conduct a public hearing to implement a citywide parcel tax in the city of San Dimas for fiscal year 25, 2025, 26, and adopt Resolution 2025-25, Option 1, which includes an increase of 3% in the parcel tax to correspond to a 3% increase in the Consumer Price Index. Approval of the recommended action would increase the parcel tax collected citywide in fiscal year 25, 26 by $31,000 from $1,040,000 to $1,071,000. It's important to note that even with this recommended increase, um, the landscape parcel tax fund is expected to end the year with a deficit of $231,860. If the city council opts not to increase the, uh, the annual assessment as recommended, that deficit would grow, uh, to $262,860. Uh, so with that, I will turn it over to the mayor and city council to conduct the, the public hearing.
We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions?
I have one. I know that we can't increase it more than the CPI, but what percentage would it need to be to close the deficit, out of curiosity? And will the deficit, is the deficit expected to grow faster than CPI? So we're going to see deficits in the foreseeable future?
Uh, I would need to do the math to figure out what the, the percent that it would need to grow to eliminate the deficit completely. We, we would need to generate another, uh, 200, what did I say? 260, 262,860. So to put that into context, the increase that we're, uh, recommending would only increase the citywide collection of the parcel tax by $31,000. So we would need to increase by quite a bit to completely close that deficit. Um, as far as the question, do I expect the costs to continue to outstretch, um, our ability to, to respond with the community, I'm sorry, with the Consumer Price Index increases? I don't know for sure. What I can say is that, um, the main costs, the reason this is, costs are growing each year, it's not because we're adding new areas, it's more because the cost, uh, to do business is simply increasing, the cost of government. So a lot of that is the contracted services, the services that we use, for example, with WCA to oversee, uh, the community forests and the trees. We have another big contract with Nevis Landscape. They oversee a lot of the public areas, the, the street medians, the parks. Those continue to increase, um, by, you know, to, to correspond with the Consumer Price Index increase each year. The other area that tends to increase would be the utilities, the cost of electricity, particularly the cost of water. Cost of water, uh, has gone up probably by about 20% in the last year. Um, so I know that's a roundabout way of answering your question, but...
I guess what I'm really getting at is, will we have a discussion soon about what to do to ensure sustainability? Because, um, if in fact it is driven by the costs of doing business, which will increase, it sounds like faster than our ability to cover those costs, at some point, things are going to break. And I wonder if we should start thinking about options for what we can do to bring this in balance? Because I don't really have a good idea of what, what options exist.
So part of that discussion I was going to have, uh, the city council asked staff to return it to future date to discuss the community forest and potential expansion of the community forest. Um, that is when I was going to broach this topic.
Got it.
The topic of the cost of all of the areas, what it costs to plant trees, and then what it costs to maintain the trees on an ongoing basis, um, with specific examples. That's when we were, I was going to have that holistic conversation with the city council. That is currently scheduled. Council requested that come back at mid-year. That's typically about in January. That's when we're planning on bringing that back.
Great, thank you.
I, I would just offer to council, like, this is, I always loved this particular, uh, agenda when this, these items come up. I remember when I first got onto council, I think I no-voted all the way through this stack. I think, Michael, you, you might recall that, I'm pretty sure I did. Thank you, yes, I'm pretty sure, thank you, Deborah. Glad the record reflects that accordingly. Um, but, uh, you know, it's interesting, because, uh, the, some of my more senior council members, at some point, we had a chat later, um, about the fact that we can't recuperate that money if, uh, thankfully, the council and their wisdom, I think, still carried it regardless of my no vote. And, uh, and I can tell you today now that, uh, unequivocally, the costs have gone up and, and, you know, as, as Michael's pointed out in, in the past, that there are times where it may make sense to forego a year, and we did during COVID, in fact, we foregone increases. Um, but I do well acknowledge that, uh, you know, at, at some point, the costs are just getting away at, at a rate that is just ridiculous. Uh, and I don't know what the answer is, if it's, you know, we've talked about the sales tax measure initiative in the past, uh, we did do that, that was not successful, uh, but costs are continuing to escalate, and so it may be a conversation that needs to be revisited at some point, but, uh, I will not begrudgingly support this, because I understand it a lot better today and think that, frankly, it's just another area that is very challenging for the city, but the residents are still benefiting greatly from what we're doing here, so.
Well, let me ask, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Add something really quick before we move on? I just wanted to know, uh, Councilmember Nacano, at our last meeting, or maybe a few meetings ago, you had, uh, touched upon drought-tolerant landscaping, and I read in our agenda on another topic, the cost of doing that now and then trying to get it, you know, for lack of better terms, going, is probably going to cost basically what we're paying right now to keep, um, the landscape that we have. However, moving on long-term, it might be at a loss now, but for long-term savings, if we can't keep up with the cost of water and the services. So just something for us to consider for our future, you know, generations.
You're, you're citing the item three, uh, on page 322 on the Boulevard Open Space Maintenance. It was, uh, it's, I believe it's the fourth paragraph down, where I'd asked about that regarding that particular district.
Right.
Um, and so I think, a question on that would be, does it only apply to this thing, or can it be?
I'm thinking long, I'm, I'm using that information from that topic, but as a general oversight for all of our landscaping and trying to keep up with preserving it, keeping it so that we're not having, um, potential fire hazard, et cetera.
I do think if, if we got into that discussion at some point substantively, I know we talked about it when we looked at redoing our center medians, going to drought-tolerant landscaping, and I received a lot of hate mail and... And I received a lot of hate mail and phone calls from residents that it was very desert-like, and this wasn't Vegas nor other countries. So the response was very negative from the community regarding it. But who knows, things might change a little bit, but there wasn't an appetite.
Goes back to Councilmember Weber's wisdom on people.
We can approve on sales tax, too. There's options. I think we need to understand what those options are, though, so.
If I could just briefly, two of the things that we do to try to control costs, one is that we are trying to rehabilitate certain areas. Sometimes it's street medians, sometimes it's landscape areas and parks or other areas, public areas. Trying to put in some drought tolerant plants so that we're not required to use quite as much water. And in some places, it makes sense and it works, and people are very happy with it. The other thing that we've been doing for about three years now, we've been installing CalSense irrigation controllers that really let us fine-tune how much water we're using, so that we're using just enough to keep everything alive and looking healthy, but not more than we need to. But it is a point well taken. You've given me some good clues about what I need to touch upon when I come back in January with kind of a comprehensive report on the community forest and an overall look at what does it cost to maintain all of our public areas. Thank you.
We have a motion, but we don't have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Then we'll move on to public hearing four, adopt Resolution 2025-27, confirming the assessment of open space maintenance District One, tract 32818 Boulevard. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to go through my report. And at the end of the report, I do have responses to many of the questions that the residents have asked. So I will work those in towards the end there. The Boulevard Assessment District was created in 1977 under the provisions of the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, Division 15, Part 2 of the Streets and Highway Codes of the State of California. The Act establishes procedures for the annual levy of assessments, which includes the approval of an engineer's report and establishing a time and a place for public hearing. Funds collected from the assessment are used to offset costs incurred for maintenance of the Boulevard Landscape District. In 2006, the 19 property owners in the Boulevard Landscape District approved by ballot measure an annual CPI adjustment, that Consumer Price Index adjustment, for future years not to exceed 7% as necessary to cover the cost of maintenance, including increased expenses related to maintaining the landscape district or the assessment district. The recommended action this evening is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed assessment rate for open space maintenance District Number One, tract 32818 Boulevard, for fiscal year 25-26. Adopt Resolution 25, sorry, adopt Resolution 2025-27 Option 1, confirming the diagram and assessment with an increase for fiscal year 25-26 for open space maintenance District Number One, tract 32818 Boulevard. Approval of the recommended action will increase the annual assessment by 3.3% or by $20.57 per household to correspond with the annual Consumer Price Index increase of 3.3%. This would increase the annual assessment from the current $623.41 to $643.98 for all 19 homes in the district. This will result in an annual revenue increase of approximately $390.83 for the year, collected in fiscal year 2025-26. With the recommended increase in the annual assessment, the ending fund balance for the assessment district is projected to be $1,878.6. However, should the city council decide to keep the same assessment that we had in the current fiscal year without the increase, the ending fund balance is projected to be $1,487.23. Some of the specific questions that the speakers asked this evening, I do have some answers. Quarterly maintenance, so we provide, they asked how often the areas maintained. We provide quarterly maintenance through the city's contractor. That includes the basics. That's trimming, that's weeding, that's pest control, making sure that the irrigation system is working, making sure that all the plants are healthy. Tree trimming, although it's not technically in the budget, we perform tree trimming and irrigation maintenance. We do that with staff in-house. Tree trimming, we do annually each fall. It's important to note that not every tree needs to be trimmed every single year, but we do trim the trees that we believe need to be trimmed. The arborist is in charge of that, the city arborist. Irrigation maintenance is very similar. If something breaks, we send staff out and we fix it. These costs generally, for the tree trimming and irrigation repairs, they're generally de minimis for staff. We heard concerns from the speakers about homeless that likes to walk from the park and they hide in the area. I knew that I, about a week ago, I discussed this with one of the residents, and the sheriff spoke to the resident, they're aware of the issue. So it's something that they're keeping an eye out. I don't necessarily recommend trimming back the bushes and the shrubs and the trees more because I know that some of the folks at the top of the assessment, the top of the slope there, they like those to be thick because it provides a screen for them from their neighbors. We heard concerns about coyotes, which of course is very difficult to address. And then a question about why some of the homes don't pay. This assessment district was created in 1977. I would need to research how the district was created to determine how they decided which homes to include and why some may have been excluded. So I don't have that particular answer tonight. All that being said, I'll turn it over to the city council for questions or to conduct the public hearing.
This is a public hearing item, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter?
I watch that all the time, we watch this. I don't think they've been done for two years, since you removed those other trees. And we don't want to have you remove the trees, but they've gotten so big that if they would trim them on a normal basis, we wouldn't have the problem we have now. They're huge, they're huge, and they're leaning. And when the one did fall across the street, it almost hit my neighbor's motorhome. And if, and we're looking for liability. Because if those trees fall on our homes, and now we have homes with a lot of little children, I'm more worried about not just the homes, I'm worried about like, death. That really does concern me.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter?
Good evening. Terry's been here for us, and Terry's seen how many trees that we've taken down across the street. And you all are very well aware of that. On Villa Verde, on their side, the trees are monsters. These eucalyptus hang over the sidewalks. They hang, if you're even taking your dog for a walk, it can hit your head. I'm sure you've all driven by, we drive by. It's between Vons and between the freeway. Those trees, they have not been trimmed because we are in the middle of tree trimming. And everybody that drives by knows. And you can see our stumps that are there. So I do agree with them. Terry, you did meet me somewhere once before, years ago, and talked about the trees. And she's been on our side, so I have to help my neighbor cross Villa Verde. As well, if the big winds come, the tree falls, it's a liability for anybody coming down Villa Verde from the freeway. I don't know if you know the exit there, as well as when the Olympics come, when the World Cup, we're going to have more traffic than we already do. People get off and cut through Villa Verde. It's a liability, and if the city owns those trees, we're going to be in more of a deficit than we already are as well. Another, oh, this is just on her neighborhood. I just would like for you guys, if you do drive by, double-check, it is, what is it, the east side? East Side Villa Verde Avenue, right? From Vons all the way to the Park and Ride, are the trees that they're talking about. So, once again, I think they need to be trimmed. And the problem with these big trees are the costs. The larger they get, the costs go higher. The cost, the more manpower it takes to haul those big monster trees out. These trees, I think, are at least 60 to 80 feet tall. They're the trees that we have in Villa Verde Ridge, which you guys are aware about. And other ways that you could cut costs, that what we're doing with our HOA, we're like our own little city there, you guys know that. We're cutting back the water meters from two inch to one and a quarter, one and a half. So if the city maybe ever wants to think of another way to save water and the amounts of water as we're changing the meters back for less water to go through, we're saving money in our HOA that way. And then check your pumps, make sure they're running and they're healthy and they're new. We've had to replace pumps as well. So the maintenance costs, but the prolonged, like Rachel talks about, the prolonged value will lower the cost later. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter? I'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
I have no questions on the matter. I would encourage that we just double-check and make sure that these trees are being trimmed yearly. That's very, very important. Thank you for letting us know. But I, if counsel doesn't have any further discussion, I would move that we approve.
Yeah, I was just wondering, and I don't know, Scott, if it would be helpful or not, but maybe with this item next year, that we could just include the service dates? Like that these things were trimmed, if it's being done annually or semi-annually? I just think it's important for transparency for the residents to know and for us to know. And I think it would just be a good thing for us all to be aware of in that way. And I mean, I think the other thing is, I know when we do these things, there's, you know, performance expectations of all of our contractors, but just stay on top of it, please. And second?
I will be supportive of the motion, but perhaps when we have our urban forest discussion later on, Scott, it would be helpful for us to understand what the different types of services that we use to maintain, or West Coast Arborists use to maintain our city trees. So, for instance, I've received similar complaints about city trees in various locations, not just these particular ones, that, you know, hey, look, there's a similar tree across the street that's privately owned, and they get it trimmed on a regular basis, and it's nice and thin and stays under control. But the city tree is just, you know, dropping needles and huge, and it creates problems because it doesn't get trimmed. But that's just the perception that it doesn't get trimmed. So I don't know if West Coast Arborists does more of a pruning rather than a trimming, and there needs to be more substantive maintenance done on the trees. But for us, it would kind of help me to understand when we have that discussion, what types of service that we get on what interval, whether it's just trimming every other year, pruning every other year, that type of thing. So that when we do get these complaints, that we kind of understand what the schedule is actually like.
One friendly amendment to what Councilman Vienna had requested, since there's questions about when these trees were trimmed this year. Perhaps instead of waiting until our next year, we could get the schedule at the next meeting about these particular trees when they were trimmed. That way, we could know definitively what the dates were and that sort of thing. Would you be open to that request?
Absolutely, yeah.
And this is a motion to approve staff recommendation, correct? Okay.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay, we'll move on to public hearing number five, adopt Resolution 2025-29, confirming the assessment of open space maintenance District Number One, annexation number three, tract 32841 Northwoods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mayor mentioned this item pertains to the Northwoods Assessment District. The Northwoods Assessment District was created in 1978 under the provisions of the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, Division 15, Part 2 of the Streets and Highway Codes of the State of California. The Act establishes procedures for the annual levy of assessments, which includes approval of an engineer's report and establishing a time and a place for a public hearing. Funds collected from the assessment are used to offset costs incurred for maintenance of the Northwoods Assessment District. The Northwoods Assessment District is scheduled to sunset January 1st, 2027, at which time the city will no longer have any responsibility for the maintenance of the landscaping around the 38 properties that comprise the Northwoods Assessment District. In 2000, I'm sorry, in 2023, residents previously rejected an increase in their assessment. And I provide this background because it gives us a kind of a clue as to how we got to where we are today. The 38 homeowners in the Northwoods Assessment District were given the option to vote for an increased assessment on May 9th, 2023. 70% of the homeowners rejected the proposed increase in the annual assessment. In the same year, in 2023, the city council directed staff to revise the engineer's report for reduced maintenance to correspond to the amount that's collected through the assessments. So essentially, we were directed to shrink the scope of work to make it match the available funds. For fiscal year 2025-26, staff recommends the annual assessment of $898.42 per parcel. It's the same assessment that was collected in the last two fiscal years without increase. For fiscal year 2025-26, the attached engineer's report reflects a reduced scope of work that includes quarterly maintenance provided by the city's landscape contractor and the cost of irrigation and utilities. Some of the services that we have to reduce due to the budget limitations include the elimination of tree trimming, reduced irrigation, and reduced utilities. The trees there were last trimmed in the fall of 2022. The recommended action is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed assessment rate for the open space maintenance District Number One, annexation number three, tract 32841 Northwoods, for fiscal year 2025-26, and to adopt Resolution 2025-29, confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2025-26 for open space maintenance District Number One, annexation number three, tract 32841 Northwoods. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city council and the mayor for the public hearing.
This is also a public hearing, I'll open it. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings. Questions?
I have two. What happens after January 1st, 2027? So do basically the neighborhood, they then are completely responsible for maintaining it, and they set their own budgets and do whatever they want with it? Or what happens at that point?
In a nutshell, that's correct. So in 2027, the city would remove the irrigation controller because we would remove the irrigation controller, we can use that somewhere else, it's an expensive piece of equipment. We would abandon the irrigation system, and the residents can band together, they can form a homeowners association. Or they can also just take individual responsibility for the trees that are in their yards. Most of the trees in Northwoods, in contrast to the Boulevard Assessment District, most of the trees in the Northwoods Assessment District are on private property. And they tend to be on slopes that are above people's homes or below people's homes. That's a little bit of the difference.
Is there anything we need to do since that data is coming up fast? Do you plan for that transition? Are they aware and they're thinking about what will happen at that point in time?
I believe that they're aware based on the community meetings that we had with them two years ago. But we can also send them out, send them a letter, just notifying them of that date that's coming up, January 1st, 2027, and what that will mean for them.
Okay.
Essentially, it just means that they're going to assume full responsibility for the trees that are on their private property.
Do you think you should offer them options? Like you can band together and form an HOA if you want to and manage it collectively? Or is it just going to be a notification that January 1st comes around? It's your problem and good luck?
We can, we can offer them the options, absolutely. I can put that in writing.
And then the other question I have is, since we've scaled back, maintenance, have we heard any complaints or any feedback or any?
I have not, I've not heard any, any negative feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. It seems like depending on how accurate our GIS system is with the city tree interactive map, for those in the community that don't know, there's an interactive GIS map that has little green dots wherever there's a city-owned tree. So if you ever have a question as to whether a tree is a city tree or not, you can refer back to this map. But looking at the Northwoods Assessment District, it looks like there might be, potentially, depending on how accurate the pins are, four city-owned
depending on how accurate the pins are, four city-owned trees that are within the district. Would those, if that is the case, and you know, those are accurate, which they may not be, because some of them are right on the property lines, would the city continue to maintain those particular trees?
Yes. We do that through the, through the, the grid pruning that takes place once every four years in each section of the city.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
And you can find the schedule online too for the pruning next to the map, which is really helpful. I just looked it up yesterday. I just wanted to add, when we do send notice, because I think that is the right thing to do, I think it would be appropriate to send it about a year out so that they have enough time to think about the options, whether they choose to use them or not.
Thank you. I will, so it sounds like I will proceed with the notice that Councilmember Nacano discussed, and the timing will be to send it out January of 2026.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as staff directs.
Second?
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. And at this point in time, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene the city council meeting. Other business, one, discussion of potential conversion of a tennis courts into pickleball courts at Lone Hill Park and San Dimas Sportsplex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We're talking about pickleball again. And I have a brief report that is mostly just recapping some of the actions, some of the discussion that has been taken, I'm sorry, some of the action that's been taken, some of the discussions that we've had. And that will just lead the mayor and the city council into your discussion for this evening. The city council first considered the construction of pickleball courts in San Dimas at its meeting of December 10th, 2024. The city council expressed an interest in converting a tennis court at the sportsplex into pickleball courts. And at that meeting, staff advised the city council that the property belongs, the sportsplex, although it's maintained by the city, the property belongs to the Bonita Unified School District and that we would need to check with the school district to see if they were amenable to the construction of pickleball courts on their property. City council directed staff to return once it consulted with the school district regarding the potential conversion of one tennis court into four pickleball courts. At its meeting of January 28th, 2025, staff reported that the school district opposed the conversion of one tennis court, basically opposed the construction of pickleball courts at the sportsplex due to what they believe was a negative impact it would have on the San Dimas High School tennis program. City council subsequently approved a motion to allocate $49,900 to convert one tennis court at Lone Hill Park into four pickleball courts and directed staff not to purchase the acoustic sound panels unless needed after 12 months of operation. City council directed staff to complete community outreach to homes within 500 feet of the proposed pickleball court and to report back to the city council if staff receive any negative input. Staff completed the outreach to the 47 homes that are within 500 feet of the proposed pickleball court at Lone Hill Park. On February 13th, 2025, staff did not receive any negative input. The request for proposals released, was released on March 6th, 2025, for the construction of pickleball courts at Lone Hill Park. Staff received a low bid, the lowest responsible bid was $34,087 to convert one tennis court into four pickleball courts. A contract has not been signed with that contractor. We've put that on hold pending further direction from the city council. At its meeting of April 22nd, 2025, the city council asked staff to agendize a future discussion for the potential conversion of tennis courts at the sportsplex and Lone Hill Park. On May 12th, 2025, the school district personnel scheduled a pickleball demonstration at the tennis courts at the sportsplex. The purpose of scheduling the demonstration was that they wanted to evaluate the noise that was generated by pickleball when compared to the noise generated by people playing tennis. The demonstration consisted of 10 students playing pickleball on three separate, three of the eight courts simultaneously. And the district personnel, after 20 or 30 minutes of observation, they determined that the students playing pickleball did not generate any more noise than the students would have generated playing tennis on the three courts. The school district is amenable to proceeding with the construction of pickleball courts on their property at the sportsplex. However, they did express concern about its exposure to, the district's exposure to legal action that could potentially be taken against the school district as a result of public pushback to the construction of pickleball courts on their property. The district would like time to develop an agreement to address these concerns between the two entities, between the city and the school district. On that basis, the school district is amenable to proceeding with the conversion of the easterly most tennis court into four pickleball courts at the sportsplex. And that specific tennis court that they're referencing, that's the one that I would have recommended also, furthest from the homes there. But that agreement, we would first, we need to negotiate it, and then the agreement would need to be reviewed and approved by the city council and separately reviewed and approved by the school board. That's what we would need to do if the city wishes to proceed with the potential conversion of a tennis court into pickleball courts at the sportsplex. This evening, you can direct staff to proceed with the construction of pickleball courts at one or both locations. For the Lone Hill Park location, that's very easy. We can move quickly. We've done all of the community outreach. We have the bid. We can award the contract quickly. Once construction starts, it would take approximately four weeks until the courts are completed. The sportsplex, as I mentioned, you could also direct us to proceed with the conversion of tennis court, one tennis court into four pickleball courts at the sportsplex. However, we would need to make sure that we negotiate an agreement with the school district to assuage their concerns. That agreement would subsequently need to be approved by the school board and also the city council separately before we could move forward with that. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor and city council for questions.
Just one quick question. When we talk about Lone Hill, we talked about that curtain that we said not to go along with unless put around the court, the sound wall, sound?
Correct. Acoustic panels that could be deployed on the chain link fence. Council directed staff, you allocated the funding for it in case we need it, but you directed staff not to purchase that until after we've had about 12 months of operation and we determined that that's actually a problem and that that would actually address the problem, the noise problem, if there is one, that we were experiencing.
And then I take it, after your demonstration at, at the high school, you said you had three courts going where kids were playing pickleball?
Correct.
And you didn't see a reason why to put an acoustic wall around it?
That would be council's discretion, so.
Did you hear the noise bad enough that you think that it was going to create a problem?
I personally did not. And, and I think the consensus among, I know among the B U S, the Bonita Unified School District staff was that they didn't feel that it was any noisier than tennis. You know, 10 people playing tennis, 10 people playing pickleball, they, they felt it was about the same. The use of those acoustic sound panels, that is one way to address, if we get noise complaints, that's one way to address that. that's one way to address that. Another way would be to curtail evening play. Those lights there, for example, at the sportsplex and Lone Hill Park, that's on a push button, we could either disable the lights, which would disallow play past dusk. You could also deploy the acoustic panels. I know the city of Laguna Beach is requiring, anyone who uses their pickleball courts within their city has to use what they call quiet pickleball rackets. And it's just a, basically a pickleball racket that's made out of a different material other than wood that is a little bit quieter. They're the only city that I know that's done that. But that's a little rundown of some of the measures we could take as a city to curtail the noise if that, if it becomes an issue at either location.
Our tennis court lights go off at what time?
Tennis court, so in the municipal code, any lighted tennis court is open until 10 o'clock PM.
Yeah, I thought you said dusk or something.
What I was saying was, if we receive noise complaints, I would come back to the city council. One of the recommendations to the city council that you could potentially consider would be curtailing the hours at the pickleball court that is problematic, specifically just that court. We could either disable the lights, we would likely be disabling the lights so that that would dissuade play after dark.
Sorry, questions?
I know some of the consideration that we were thinking about is whether the contractor would give us some sort of cost savings if we were to do both locations at the same time. I know that doesn't look like it's going to pan out, but is that something that we anticipate contractually, we would be able to do on the front end and see that savings? Or is it not close enough? Do we, do we not think that that's not going to be a thing?
I don't, I don't necessarily believe that we would achieve, I believe we would achieve an economy of scale if we have the same contractor do both courts, because they would have their equipment in the city, they could move from one court and finish it and go to the next court across the other side of the city. We would have to bid, I know with the sportsplex, we would have to bid that separately because we haven't bid that. It's actually a larger area, which would require a longer fence than the fence we would be creating at Lone Hill Park. Also, the area that would be, that would be resurfaced and then repainted, that's a greater area also. So I would anticipate that the sportsplex would cost a little bit more than Lone Hill Park to convert that into pickleball courts.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Director, for working on this and for being so diligent. I think the first question I had is, I believe when I'd asked this question previously, I don't know if I fully understood some of the context behind this, but it's my understanding we no longer have tennis lessons at the sportsplex, correct?
That is correct. We no longer have any city classes or any city activities at the sportsplex.
And is the reason we moved all programming from the sportsplex because it was difficult to work with the school or school district on programming? Or what was the reason for moving?
No, they've actually, they've actually been very good to work with. They're very responsive. The last program that we really had in there, we had some tennis classes, we moved them to some of our parks because, because we can. And then we also had a youth basketball program that was at their, at their, you know, basketball courts. We've moved that to other parks also, just because it, it makes sense if we can do that, we can move them to city parks. But it wasn't, it wasn't because of difficult, the district is difficult to work with.
Okay, that's good to know. But currently, there's no programming happening at those courts that the city is paying for and maintaining, correct?
That's correct. It's just public, public use that's allowed. And I should clarify, officially, in the joint use agreement that goes back to the 80s between the school district and the city, those courts are not supposed to be available to the public until 4 o'clock PM. In practice, for many years, they've been allowing the public to use those all day long.
Sure.
Provided that they don't interfere with the school's tennis program.
But what I would also counter is that I've gone there multiple times after 4 o'clock, and the tennis team is having the practice using all of the courts or most of the courts past 4 o'clock too. So the times that it would be available for the public are also being used by the school district, from what I could tell.
I, I can address that with the district, yeah. Technically, after.
You, you don't need to, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that it's, it's a two-way street. It's, you know, I, I think it doesn't seem to be any issue, but if they let us, if they let the public use it during the day, I think I'm not opposed to them using it, you know, maybe after hours or something, but I have seen that. I don't really have any other questions. I guess the only thing I would say is that I do think that in the future, and I know this is not your fault, it's more a message for the school district, if the city council of San Dimas makes a request of the school district, my expectation is that the staff of the school district at least take it to the school board for notification. Because what we did find with the situation is that none of the five school board members were even aware of this. And so when I had talked with them one-on-one, they discovered that it was made at the staff level. And I just feel very strongly that any requests coming from this body should go to the peer institution, which is the other electeds, as it should be the other way. If they ever made a request of the city, I would think all of us would want to be aware of it, would know of it. And I would just ask that that, you know, that that be put in place as kind of like an official policy.
Absolutely. That, that is definitely something I would do differently. So I did notify a superintendent. My expectation is that they would notify, it would go up the chain. It did not, yeah.
I, I have no fault or issue at all with what staff did. It was just more of a concern on their side, so, yeah.
I guess as far as what we want to do moving forward, in my guesstimation, it sounds like the, the school district site is going to take a while to, to figure out. And I don't see any reason, as far as I can tell, to delay the Lone Hill Park construction. So I'd feel comfortable moving forward with the Lone Hill Park separately and then just let the, the court process play out at the San Dimas High School, at the sportsplex.
I, I hear you. I will, I, well, who knows what the motion will be, but I'm not going to support Lone Hill Park, I think, two-part. One is the funding side of this. You know, we looked and sought out to do one pickleball court. I think the ideal location for it is the location that we're currently working through. And if we were to do a second court, I'd rather see it in the inner portion of the city or in Via Verdi to better serve San Dimas residents and not those that may take advantage of it from the outskirts of the city. So I understand, you know, if money wasn't an object and we were, you know, putting these courts, you know, pretty freely throughout the city, I would not be opposed to Lone Hill Park as an expansion. But if I was going to pick a second location, it would certainly be, you know, somewhere that is more accessible centrically to San Dimas residents than on the outskirts of the city.
I definitely agree with you that the sportsplex would be ideal, for sure. I think that would be my first pick.
When we were originally considering where to put the pickleball court, one of our main concerns was distance to residential homes. And I think that's why we landed at Lone Hill Park, because it was the furthest away, I believe 123 feet. I would, I understand your concern, but I would say that the needs of our border-type residents, in my opinion, outweigh the fear of it being used by non-residents. So I support moving forward with Lone Hill and would also like to see the sportsplex through.
I would just offer that, as it stands right now, the San Dimas Women's Racquetball Club utilization seems to be largely used by outside residents. And it seems if we're going to subsidize the, the other cities to use our public resources, we should start recuperating or charging fees for those things. And I think that's a real serious consideration. I hear what you're saying. I would just submit that if we're going to vote for two, that we either bifurcate it, because I may be supportive of one, but a, a motion that includes both, I will not support, so. In terms of Lone Hill. If it was another location, I'm open to that, whether it's exploring Via Verdi or it's, you know, looking at Marchant Park. In fact, I went over and looked at Pioneer Park even was suggested by some that I spoke with over the weekend. But Lone Hill Park to me is, it's too far on the outskirts. And I think we, there's better locations if we're going to invest the money to do that that would better serve a majority of San Dimas residents.
I, I don't disagree with you. I think the, the, the location is definitely on the, literally on the border of the city, but I would have hoped to have flushed that out a lot sooner, before we did all the footwork to, to reach out to residents and all that.
Yep.
I think earlier today, earlier today, I think either Brad or Travis mentioned to me about that there was a app out there listing pickleball sites throughout the region.
Yeah, Mayor, city council, there, I don't know if there's an app. I know there's like lift serves and there's groups, so if there's a pickleball anywhere in the city, it's going to be found by those, those little, those organizations that schedule tournaments and utilize pickleball courts throughout all the communities. I think that's what you're referring to that we talked about earlier.
Is there any way to, to make it so that you have to put in a credit card for the net to come out of the ground?
I would just say that when you look at some of these other locations, I mean, I'm looking at Pioneer Park right now and looking at some of these other sites, that there are other locations that we could look at that I think would have a greater ROI on residents, but, but either way, I think when we started this, the splex was part of the discussion, and then we ended up at Lone Hill Park because we had had the information back regarding the district. And that's how we ended up where we ended up. But now we're talking two courts. I mean, that's double the appropriation of funding, and I'm just not even comfortable with that, to be honest. It's a stretch until we even get into budget, but either way, it's the council's.
Well, it's refreshing that we are coming in under budget. We approved for $49,000, it's at $34,000, so it gives a tiny bit of a buffer. I hear you when you say that the pickleball at the sportsplex might cost a little more than $34,000, because I had in my head, okay, that's an additional $19,000 that we would be spending. But I, I do think that when we originally looked at this, we took a lot of time and consideration on the places. I wasn't opposed to Pioneer Park either, but what led me to go with Lone Hill is the distance and just trying to be respectful of the residents and the noise.
I do support bifurcating it, if that would be more comfortable to you, because of the discussions that came about. I mean, my main thing is the sportsplex for many reasons that I've outlined, but given that we've already notified all the residents around Lone Hill, it was set to move forward, I could be supportive of that as a second location.
Well, it, it sounds like we have consensus that the sportsplex is the ideal spot for this to be. And I, I don't disagree that from the outset, our intent was to convert one court. And so, I mean, there is validity to what you're saying. So I, I don't have a problem, and it would cause me no heartburn whatsoever, to move forward and try to fast-track as much as we can the sportsplex. I think since we already went through the bidding process for Lone Hill, that's kind of unfortunate, but I don't know that, I, I can't imagine that the process that the school district wants to go through would take all that long. Do we have any guesstimate as to how long it took to do the public noticing and bidding process for Lone Hill?
Yeah, the, it was, it was all very quick. The, let's see, we did, so the outreach was done through postcards, so it was very easy to identify using a GIS system, the number of homes that are within the 500-foot radius. That's very easy to do, particularly at the sportsplex, there aren't a lot of homes around the court that we're talking about. And as far as getting the bid out, we could do that quickly also, because I think it's just tweaking the bid specs that we use for the Lone Hill Park court, it's really the same project. So it's just making a few tweaks. We could probably get that out pretty quick also.
But you're saying that, that the sportsplex is larger?
The sportsplex is larger, and it doesn't really, doesn't necessarily change the bid specs. It means that somebody's might bid higher, they might tell us it's going to cost more to convert that into pickleball courts than the Lone Hill Park, just because, for example, the linear, the linear feet, it's longer at the sportsplex, that means the fencing, you're going to have more fencing, that will be a little more expensive. Fencing plus the greater area that you have to resurface, and there's more painting that has to take place. So that, I would presume that that would cost a little bit more than Lone Hill Park.
5%, 10%?
If I had to guess, I'd say, I would, it's truly a guess, I'd say 10 to 15%.
Yeah, but I'm, I, I think that if anybody's gone out to see the people that play this, usually there's a group of people that are out there. So the spacing, to me, makes more sense even from having the groups that typically come with this. If they're going to hang out on the sidelines and they're going to be there, you know, waiting and cheering on their colleagues, which I've seen with a lot of people rotate in, rotate out. I think the other piece of this is, to me, you know, McKinley is right there, and it's important to me to co-locate resources that I think are important and modern and contemporary. And I think serving that population provides an additional benefit that is not seen at the other location. And, and I just would remind council that, you know, yes, we have excess money, but there's $20,000 tied up in trees and expansion of the urban forest and other nonsense that we've talked about, that to me is a competing interest with this. So when we talk about this, when we revisit those discussions, this to me is going to be this, this for that, if you will, because this isn't the Parks and Rec arena. So I just think, no, those are things that 100%, we started this with one court that we were trying to do. I think we've achieved that. I, I'm supportive of that. But, you know, when we get into a second court, I think there's definitely trade-offs in other areas of the budget that we're going to talk about later on.
Can I ask you, Scott? We have not, although we put the bids out, we've received them, we have a lowest responsible bidder, we're not obligated to anybody, we haven't accepted any.
Correct. We've not fully executed a contract, that's correct.
So we're not going to be out any money if we just move locations and run out another bid?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we amend what we've already put out, just changing the location?
That is essentially what we would be doing if, if council directs staff to, to proceed with the sportsplex. The delay with the sportsplex, I mean, all of that's really quick. So the, getting the contract, bidding the project, conducting the public outreach is really fast. I think what's going to take a little bit longer would be negotiating the agreement and having both boards agree that, agree to that. Review it, agree to it, approve it at a formal council meeting, at a former, a formal school board meeting. That would take a little longer.
Yeah, when we're talking about the agreement between us and the, and the school district, we're, we're basically talking about liability.
That's correct. So their concern is basically noise. I mean, if you look across the country, you hear a lot of stories, you hear the really sensational stories about noise issues. You don't hear the stories about pickleball courts that are fine, right? That people like, that don't cause a lot of problems, they're located in areas that are farther from homes. You hear the worst stories, and I, I think that that's what they're concerned about. So in an extreme example, what would happen if we proceeded, we built the pickleball court, the public, there's a lot of public pushback, we end out returning this to a tennis court at great expense? Who would pay for that? That's one of the questions that the school district has. Now, that's an extreme example, but that is part of what they're concerned about.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, Ryan. I'm open to just moving forward with the sportsplex and then playing that by year. And maybe next year's budget, we revisit the second location. I think that's also very reasonable. But I, I do agree that the sportsplex is the place that would make the most sense, that I'd like to see it the most, so I would prefer to move forward with that one first.
Thank you. Eric?
Anybody else got anything else you want to say?
I'll just say this with respect to the sportsplex. I know that certain members of Bonita Unified, particularly at the high school, have been actively opposing this project. And what I would say is that pickleball has taken off everywhere. And I think that, given time, there could be a lot of students, including those boys at McKinley or others, who took advantage of using that court to become really good players. And I believe that in 10 to 15 to 20 years, those people. those people in opposition at the school district will be very proud of the people who have become very accomplished at the sport and are now students there. So I would just ask those people to keep an open mind and to recognize that this really is about the greater good of the city. And so that's why, again, why I was so much in favor of having this at the sportsplex. Despite the opposition from members there, so.
You know, my worry and my concern is that it's taken us a long time to get here. I'd really like to provide a pickleball court to members of our community who so badly want one and have been very, very patient with us. I have, I like the sportsplex as a location for pickleball. But as it is right now, it's not a 100% yes, because there's still negotiations to be had. We've done the work to prepare Lone Hill. We've spent whatever the monies are for notifications. Which is why I think we should move forward with Lone Hill and then continue to work with the school district to go ahead and put a pickleball court in the sportsplex. For all we know, that could be next year.
Is, is the money that's allocated for this, out of this year's budget, current budget?
Yes.
It's not next year's budget?
Correct. It's this year's, current fiscal year.
I'm pretty I understand everything about the school district and I, you know, was a little bit unaware that people are, were advocating against it. I didn't hear any of that from the, any of the school board members.
None of the board members, no.
Oh.
I was referring to certain staff members and stuff, yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware about it. I knew, was aware that there was one or two, but it sounds to me like there's more from what you're saying.
They were very vocal, from what I understand, but again, my, my remarks were meant more toward this may not turn out the way you want it. However, I think in time, you'll be very glad that this was put in place. So that's what I want to focus on as a positive.
For the schools, for the school.
For everybody. I think it'll benefit everybody, including the students.
Well, I I actually think the community, community could use two, two different locations. I had not thought about Marjon Park because I thought there were houses fairly close to there, more, I think more sold than at Lone Hill Park. Okay, and I think people are going to travel. It didn't, you know, it's either going to be our residents or it's going to be some other community and, and as we know, that I went to a rec center open house last, last week. And when I looked in the pool, I saw half a dozen San Dimas residents and 40 other, from other people's, from other communities in the pool doing their yoga. So we know that people from other communities are going to come. And I don't, I really don't believe that putting it at Lone Hill Park or at Marjon Park is going to make a difference to these people who travel to want to do this. But I, I also am concerned about the fact that at least a couple of us are, would really like to see the, the sportsplex be the, the location. And Ryan brings up an interesting, not an interesting, a very important part about the fact of the funding. Because we don't know what the funding, what the, what the cost of Lone Hill, or not Lone Hill, sportsplex is going to cost. It could cost more because of whatever the reasons. And I, and I also hate to put this off because as as Rachel says, we have put it off. Takes us 20 years to build a bathroom. So but I would be willing to hold off 30 days to find out how this transaction happens with with the school district. I can't imagine this thing should take more than a few days. It's not.
Well, Mayor, City Council, it's, it's actually a negotiation with them on liability. And, and if we were to get sued, they're not going to want to pick up any lawsuit based on noises. There are cases, I don't know what city, it might have been Laguna Beach, where there was noise and lawsuits that went along with pickleball courts.
I think Claremont had some problems too.
And, and that is something that the district, I don't know where that's going to go. It might take more than 30 days because it's got to come back to each body in that negotiation on who's going to pick that up, how's it going to be shared. I don't know what that's going to look like. But it's more complicated than just moving forward quickly. I think it's going to have to go back and forth a couple of times.
If, if it makes any difference for the discussion with the school district, if it hopefully helps them get over their fear of liability of the, the noise, I would be also totally fine with just moving forward with the acoustic paneling. Just to help get them over that. Again, I think it is the most appropriate location. Even though we weren't considering it for Lone Hill Park, doesn't mean that we can't put it in at the sportsplex. I don't think it'll be an issue there. It is far enough away that I don't, I don't know that it'll be an issue, but you know, I I'm, I'm amenable to that.
23 feet from the nearest home.
23 feet? Which, which location?
Sportsplex. But based upon the, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember. It's actually 213 feet.
So sorry, I thought I read 23.
That's okay. Yeah, the.
I'm trying to figure out.
Right, so it's 230, so we're talking about the farthest court?
Okay.
Right, so it's more across from McKinley?
I thought originally we were talking about the one in the back, in the back corner.
The one, we're talking about the one that's on the opposite side, right? Furthest to the east, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm glad, I'm glad that was brought up because, I mean, the one at Lone Hill is, in proximity, appears to me to be way closer to residents and the sportsplex. And so, I mean, ultimately, the, the placement, to me, is ideal to do it, the furthest court. And it makes the most sense for access, I think, to people.
I just want to say I'm not crazy. It says 26 feet.
Oh, 26 feet? That's the I can understand why that's confusing. I think that's referring to the court that's right next to the homes.
I just had to check myself, make sure, check my pulse, make sure it's still here.
No, you're correct. The, the court that we're talking about is actually the, the farthest court.
Okay, that's good. That makes me feel better as well.
At, at Lone Hill Park, that court is 123 feet from the nearest home.
And it's two, two, two something from the other one?
213 feet at the sportsplex.
So now we're potentially considering move forward with the sportsplex, increase our budget potentially to cover the panels for the acoustic. Is that what Councilmember?
Yeah, I mean, I think when we originally considered Lone Hill Park, we had allocated or set aside the money for the acoustic paneling just with the idea that we and last we talked about it, we just decided to move forward without it. But if noise is going to be a, a concern enough to delay the the implementation of this, then I would just assume we already allocated money for the paneling, just included in the, in the proposal at the sportsplex.
Do we think that's going to change the school district's outlook on liability, having the panels or not?
We haven't even had that discussion yet. All we've had is the nod that they would be amenable to putting that there. But we'd have to have these discussions. If the council wants to go in the direction.
I, I could only imagine that at a very bare minimum, that, that would help grease the skids a little bit. And at, at least maybe make us more comfortable accepting any liability. Because we've taken measures to mitigate it. And it would be more legally defensible if it, if we were to get sued for it, so. I, I can't imagine that a, a park that's currently used for tennis activities with acoustic paneling to mitigate the noise, it being in the furthest court away. That would, to me, that would be a very legally defensible type of case if somebody were to.
I'm just having a hard time on how it is that you can have two, four, six tennis ball courts and there's a belief that this is going to have a substantial.
That's my thought too.
Yeah, well, include, I'm saying with the ones we're going to convert, two, four, six.
They also tested it with, how many students did they test it with?
Approximately 10 students playing on three courts simultaneously.
They concluded that there was no difference in noise.
Correct. Now, it was an unscientific test. We didn't have a decibel meter, but, but that was their conclusion.
Yeah.
I think this is a great location for pickleball. I just am not opposed to having two and having one at Lone Hill where we'd already gone through and thought it was our best option at the time, did the outreach. Is there an expiration on the bid or anything like that going on?
The bid is probably going to be valid for about two or three months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me ask this. With, if the end result of the discussion with the, the school, the school district boils down to, hey, you guys can do whatever you want if you, if you assume liability for any noise. Is that something that city staff or the city attorney would be opposed to? Is that something that we're going to dig our heels in and insist that they maintain the li, the legal liability for?
It's ultimately going to be a question for the city council about how much liability risk you want to take on to get a court there.
Well.
No matter how you slice it, we incur the liability at Lone Hill Park just the same. So.
I, I would say almost even more so.
Right, but, but here's what I would point out about the liability in terms of the sportsplex. We're paying to improve their property that they will benefit from for a very long time. And we're also paying to maintain courts that generate the same amount of noise that they benefit from, that they use for tournaments and everything else. I frankly think they should pick up the liability the same they do for the courts because we're giving them free money to improve their property. And then on top of that, say, well, we're also going to do this because, you know, you're having difficulty dealing with this decision, to me seems remarkably unfair. So my position is, is that they really ought to pick up the same liability as the tennis courts. And I'm happy to have those conversations one-on-one with each of the board members to lay out my view, because I do think it's a matter of fairness as well.
And I have no problem supporting that exact position.
You know, I I had not made a decision on, on one or two, but I thought two for the community would be, you know, a right move. And I still believe that two would be a good, a good compromise, a good move. But since we are moving in the direction to get it at the sportsplex, that's where we all originally wanted it. And then we've run into this hiccup. Now they're moving that direction. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to support the move forward with the sportsplex. And then I would be interested in looking at the, the other location in Lone Hill and or talk, give us a little time to look at Marjon Park. Okay, for the next budget cycle.
And Mayor, I'd ask, I'd also ask, not just limited to that, I'd like all the parks in the city that are suitable to be considered because it may be, like, I'd rather see something in Via Verdi, to be very honest. Like, that just seems absent to me. We all have something in the, the flatlands, as some refer to it, and then nothing in Via Verdi. And I think that also would be important.
The only, the only tennis courts in Via Verdi is at Ladera Sierra and that overlooks houses. It's above houses, if I remember.
There, there's an elevation difference, yeah.
An elevation difference, so I don't know how that sound would all work, but I, I could support looking at, at all the parks.
I thought that's what we did, though. I thought we did that in the beginning and we looked at all the parks. I have no problem putting a pickleball anywhere at any park. I think it's great. I think everyone should have one. But I do want us to be efficient. And I just think that the longer we toss this around, we're just doing a, a disservice. I would just love to get something for our community members who have been so patient with us.
Right. I would add to that. I the sportsplex, I think there's unanimous consent on that. The question is where we are with timing and with process and the selection that went through it. We did, we looked at all the courts. I actually was in favor of Via Verdi. I, I do think that there was a lot of concerns about the houses around it that would protest that. And so that's why it was ruled out, I think.
And, and we don't know that, that people would protest.
And that's my point, is we don't know. And if we're going to spend the money, I hear you on the urgency, but the truth is, we'd rather do it right. And I'm not going to waste taxpayers' money because anecdotally, we sit here and think that. I'd rather have staff go out and notice, find out. Maybe the community says we're willing to accept it. We want it. And I'd be perfectly fine with that, if that's what the community wants.
I'm going to rat myself out again, but my kid has a portable pickleball net. We take it to Ladera Sierra Park and play on the tennis course all the time.
I knew it.
No complaints so far.
So long story short, I, I'm I believe that we should move forward with the sportsplex and see where we stand, but I'm not so sure that I would go ahead and install that extra $10,000, $20,000 curtain until we find out if there's an issue. So just like we were doing with Lone Hill Park. Okay, if there's an issue, then we have the ability to just go ahead and put it in. And we already have it funded.
I would agree. We should see complaints before we spend that money. I don't, Eric, I don't know if you feel differently.
No, that's reasonable. I mean, the, the only, the only reason that I was mentioning that is that, you know, if we're going to put all the liability off on the school district, then that may be the assurance that they need to move forward, which I'm okay with. If the assurance that they need is that, hey, we have the money set aside and if there are complaints, we'll put it up. But if there are none, then we'll leave it as is, then that's fine too. I, I think there's, that's totally reasonable.
I'd entertain a motion before we move on. It'll be here all night.
Mayor, I would like, I understand I may not be on the winning side of this, but I would like to split the motion. You had a fancy word and I don't know what that is. I don't remember. But I would like to just go ahead and vote on the sportsplex and vote on Lone Hill Park and just see where it lands and then move from there.
All right, I move the, we move forward with placing the the current appropriation for funding and efforts towards moving forward its, at the splex. And then there will be a second motion that will follow related to Lone Hill Park.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Are you sure we haven't talked on enough yet? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0.
All right, and then I move that we consider appropriating funding and moving forward with a second location for pickleball court at Lone Hill Park as previously outlined by staff.
I second.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We need a roll call vote here?
Sure. Hell yeah, I did. I pulled the John Ebner. I just voted against my own motion.
I thought it was my turn. Nacano.
Yes.
You want to repeat the, the motion, please?
Consider appropriating, appropriating funding and moving forward with a second location at Lone Hill Park. Correct?
Yeah.
And that motion was made by Councilmember Vienna, second by Mayor Protem Nacano. I have a yes vote for Councilmember Vertacos. Councilmember. Councilmember Nakano.
Yes.
Councilmember Vienna?
No.
Councilmember Weber?
No.
Mayor Bedar? I can't record that.
Pardon me, you can't record that? I wanna say yes and I wanna say no at the same time. Because yes is gonna, we're gonna start it. No, we're gonna, it's gonna die. And I really believe it should come back at a later, later time.
I don't think, I don't think what you just said is impossible, Mayor. Not saying no, just not right now.
No.
The motion fails with a vote, two votes for yes, three notes votes for no. Motion fails.
The good news is pickleball is coming to San Dimas, so we should all celebrate that.
You're here.
But I would be remiss if I didn't say that I wanna see a second pickleball court in San Dimas, and I'll be looking forward to do something with one of those locations or one of these park locations in the next budget cycle.
Yeah, Mayor, actually, to that point, I would move that we direct staff to bring back a proposal for a second pickleball court evaluating site suitability as well as distances from residents at all parks that currently have tennis ball courts for consideration in the next cycle and potential funding.
Second. Was that a motion?
Yeah, that was a motion, yeah.
Any further discussion?
We have that information, right? Because that was the information that we started this all with?
We generally do. So what I would, we have the distances measured. We have the diagrams of the parks. I would be bringing that back to the city council.
Of all the parks?
Yes. All the parks with tennis courts. Yes. I think the original exploration that we did was fairly informal. I remember suggesting Ladera Sierra Park, just due to the topography differences. I thought the sound wouldn't carry into the homes like other locations would because they're not on the same level. But I think just from a site tour, the belief was it was too close to houses. But I don't know. It's not that I'm looking for some scientific, you know, evidence of whether the noise level is going to be more or less. I think I'm more interested in whether the residents around there would be open to the idea or not.
Yeah, I agree with that. And from my perspective, like, I don't remember any substantive discussion around other locations. I know we all anecdotally talked about it. And if we're gonna talk about it in a way you wanna fund it again, then from my perspective, we need to do the outreach. And then we, at least for me, I'll make an informed vote. But I'm not just gonna anecdotally say like, hey, yeah, that looked good, that didn't. I mean, this is another 80, this is another what? This will be $100,000 into this by the time we're done with this. And there's gonna be other things that come up at budget. So, you know, and there's a lot of competing interests. So, I mean, I can withdraw the motion also, and we can wait to see what those budget priorities are, which I don't have a problem doing either. Or we get it teed up so we can talk about it substantively when we get into budget, which is what I think works.
Mayor, City Council, may I, because it'd be really hard for us to do the community outreach for parks that we don't know. Ladera Sierra, every park with a tennis court, we'd be doing 500 radius surveys on if the community wants it in those parks. May I suggest we are gonna be doing a community survey. Maybe we add a question in there as where you would like to see potential.
No, I disagree. I think that, and that's not the motion. So the motion, to me, is to bring back what you previously had so that we can have a discussion on whether or not we wanna outreach those specifics, locations and neighborhoods with what you've had. This goes back to the discussions we had for parking at trailheads. And we went through a big discussion about this. And ultimately, we talked about surveying people and all this stuff, and really it had to deal with those people that are directly impacted, just like what we have down at the other side of Walnut Creek and opening that parking lot. This is very personal to the people that live there that will be directly impacted by this. And I don't wanna see a community survey that broadly takes interest from all over the city and directly impacts specific residents. You know, that's my perspective, but, you know, we do the community survey and it's like, you know, well, let's reprioritize the swim and racquetball club, and you get people to put in. At the end of the day, who are those people? And who are they that are meaningfully contributing to what we have to make intelligent decisions on this funding? You know, to me, this is really, really important, that we look at the specific neighborhood we're talking about and we engage those specific residents. For me, I agree with what was said earlier. There are apps that will bring people to these things. So as much as we can insulate it for the residents that are gonna be there, because we're gonna have the same discussion we have with the trailhead. The next thing after we do this is the impact on parking. And that's a real community concern. So I don't want to broadly survey the community about it personally. I wanna survey the people that are gonna be directly impacted when it is that everybody's parking there and then they have a parking problem, and we're gonna open up that can of worms because it's not as simple as just putting a pickleball court there, to be very honest.
Understand. And my question on what you wanna bring back, I understand the report that we brought back before, but it sounded like you wanna, so we, in addition to the information we brought, distance and all of that, you also wanna have input from each of the parks that have, currently have courts?
No, I just want you to bring back the report so we can talk about it.
Okay.
That's it. Because I think there is a lot of discussion amongst us that has to happen about all of these things. There's no direction. It's to bring that back so we can go through the discussion on each one of those subsets and then have that as a starting point to move forward. That's, to me, the motion. But, you know.
I appreciate you clarifying that because I misunderstood, too. I thought you wanted community outreach on each one.
No, no, I want, I want us to talk about it so then we can say, yes, this makes sense. Let's reach out to that community, see how this goes. And the community we think it might work in might say, hell, no. We don't want this.
Like what we did with Lone Hill Park. And we had nobody respond with any negativity or positivity, but nobody responded to the community outreach, right?
We had one positive comment.
Oh.
One person called and said they're very excited.
That's delightful.
No negative, no negative comments.
Outstanding.
Yeah, I think as part of a broad discussion, bring the report back. If you had a particular park in your district that you thought would be suitable, then we can each kind of discuss the merits of a location in our district. And as a, as a body, we can come to a consensus on one or two.
Right. All right, we have a motion and second. I think we're done with further conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Five zero.
Can I ask one, can I ask one question before regarding this? Would it be difficult to estimate the usage of those courts at all? Because that might be also helpful now that this has moved forward. So in other words, if Marshaun Park had both tennis courts utilized during hours 95% of the time, that would be useful to know. If it's too hard to estimate, then, you know, no, don't worry about it. But I think you can see where I'm trying to go, if, right, to understand, like, if you were to take something away where it has very high utilization, that would, that's probably not a good idea to do. So, if it's easy to estimate, great. If not, don't worry about it.
Like where the classes are, et cetera, because.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll include that in the analysis.
About how long do you think it'll take for this report to get back to us?
The report won't take that long because I think it's mostly written. I think there are some, based on our conversation now, I think we're all wiser. There are some things that I would add in there. Councilmember Nakano's suggestion, I think what will take longer would be working on the sportsplex just because we're gonna work with the district and figure out how to make that work. So the report, I can get back to probably pretty quick.
Yeah, but to be clear, the motion was for this to come back with budget. That's what the motion was, when we consider next year's budget for this exercise.
And then budget, budget's coming along pretty quick.
I, yeah, I can, I can likely have this ready for the next council meeting.
This discussion only took as long as the whole council meeting.
But we didn't go to study session, so that's a good thing.
Kind of felt like people.
All right, motion carries five zero. Okay, we're gonna go to other business, too. Introduce ordinance 1325, updating the fire hazard severity zone FHszz pursuant to the government code. Staff.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm presenting an overview of San Dimas's updated fire hazard severity zone map. Local responsibility areas in Southern California were notified on March 24th, 2025 of the newest fire hazard severity zones and are required to adopt the new maps by ordinance within 120 days of notification. I do want to outline that Assistant Fire Chief Steve Cabrera is here. Thank you for your patience. And he's been very helpful in answering staff questions and provided review for this presentation tonight. So why is the adoption of these severity zones important? As we know, wildfire risk continues to grow across the state and locally. Adoption of an updated fire hazard severity zone map helps ensure public safety and most importantly, guides building standards and fire code. It also will assist in emergency preparedness efforts and planning. So what are these fire hazard severity zones? For those who aren't aware, there are three zones, and they're designated as moderate, high, and very high. And each zone reflects how likely a wildfire is likely to take place in a particular area and how intense that wildfire could be. So CAL FIRE updated these maps using the latest science modeling, including fire history, ember travel, terrain type, and local fire weather, amongst other data points. So what's new in the new 2025 maps and the overall update from the state? It uses more recent fire history, improved modeling for ember travel, and includes data that is specific to our urban fire environment. The map was prepared by the state fire marshal and reflects a more accurate picture of current wildfire risk. This is a 15-year undertaking with the last fire hazard severity zone update for our jurisdiction occurring around 2008 and 2011. So this is intended to be a longstanding hazard plan. So under state law, we can't reduce areas shown on the map, which I will show on the next slide. We can only suggest increasing severity zone areas and presenting that to CAL FIRE. Once adopted, this map guides several things. It will guide building and fire code requirements for new developments, emergency planning efforts. Properties that are now designated in severe higher severity zones will have to provide real estate disclosures when they go for sale. And of course, it'll provide new defensible space enforcement for new developments. So this is the new map, and I apologize, I don't have a before and after of the 2008, 2011 map to compare to this, but I can kind of narrate the differences. So as you can see, on the very northern end of the city, we have a very high fire risk area. And that area, the core of that area has remained the same, but it has expanded a little bit more easternward and then southward with the moderate and high zones. You can also see the Bonelli Park area that has remained a core area, but it has expanded a good, significant amount with the high severity zones. So it was discussed a little earlier tonight from the public. So I do want to address a common concern with insurance. The adoption of these maps tonight will not automatically trigger or determine insurance rates. Per the California Department of Insurance, companies use their own models for underwriting and don't necessarily use the fire hazard severity zone maps. To expand on that a little further, again, this map is meant to be a 10-year plan, and insurance companies are much more interested in looking at individual structures and mitigating on that risk factor on a year-to-year basis versus a long-term plan. So with that, we do recommend that City Council introduce ordinance 1325 to adopt the updated map. And myself and Assistant Fire Chief Steve Cabrera are available to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so any questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. And I'll jump at once.
I'll move that we introduce ordinance 1325.
Second.
Do we need to read by title?
Yes.
Ordinance 1325. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, California, Designating Fire Hazard Severity Zones.
I'll move that we introduce ordinance 1325 and waive further reading.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. It sounds like you guys all burn out on the pickleball.
No.
Pickleball, though.
Yeah, I got moved into the very high now, too.
Wait a minute, did I?
No, you don't have any, I don't think.
You all will be coming to my house when you have trouble.
All right. Oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes or may be determined by the chair. You have one and a half minutes.
Okay, because we have to deal with this quite, quite a lot. The 2025 map has our area as severe. 2026 map, next year, we're moderate. So this ordinance, how does that take effect? I'm serious, if you look it up on the CAL FIRE map. How does this, this ordinance will be in the books as of tonight? But what happens when the maps change, which they change yearly, right? So we just had a meeting with the fire department at the Plumber Building. And they showed the 2026 map, and it shows us as moderate on the south side for 2026. As of 2025, right now, we're severe. No? Do you want me to, I can, I can go back and look it up real quick on my phone.
So the, the map does not change annually, however, we can sidebar and maybe you can show us the map that you're looking at and we can identify what that, what you're looking at to verify how it matches with the fire hazard severity zone.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if you make an ordinance today, but yet the map changes for next year, do we, we come back and we review the ordinance or no? No?
So the fire hazard severity zone map will, will not change next year, but if it were, yes, we would take that back to council for ordinance adoption.
Okay.
But again, it doesn't, will not change for next year. So it could be you're looking at a different map, and we can identify.
So at the top of our fire letters, there's a number to call? And each, the number that you call is at the top of the letter by jurisdiction. I'm in the Pomona area, and they have certain people that you talk to for that area, and they look it up, and they go over the fire letter with you, and that's what I was told. Twice, I verified that twice.
You may be looking at a utility severity zone map, so that's, that would be my guess. There are two different severity zone maps. There's the fire hazard severity zone map brought up by CAL FIRE, and then there is a separate utility severity zone area map.
Okay, we can look at it. I have the letter, a picture of it on my phone.
Lisa, can you team up with?
Yes.
This is begin and figure out?
It's good news for our area that we've, shows moderate, shows yellow. So, okay. I just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Thank you.
We have to deal with it a lot over there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Steve Cabrera, your Assistant Fire Chief.
Thanks for sticking around.
Yeah, thank you, guys, for getting through the ordinance. As we all know, that was mandated by Assembly Bill 211. So it's great to see San Dimas getting that done right away. You guys are well ahead of the 120-day deadline, so thank you. The first city of my, of my nine. So, yeah, there's a lot of confusion here. So the new LRA maps do not take effect until next year as far as, because, as far as the defensible space enforcement requirements. So defensible space is when the firefighter folks come out and they inspect the improved properties for residential that are inside those hazardous areas. There's some confusion because some people, they're confusing LRA with SRA. Those are two different maps, and they're updated at two different intervals. Those are two different maps, and they're updated at two different intervals. So the LRA is what we're talking about tonight, and that's when each city has to adopt an ordinance. Those are updated roughly on a 10-year mark. We're a little late because the last ones were approved in 2011, so we're hitting it today in 2025. So once again, those were pushed out on March 24th, and we're, have to go full ordinance in 120 days, so July 22nd is the deadline on that. So what are we going to inspect for 2026? And by the way, San Dimas, we are probably at 90% completion of defensible and space inspections. We do the city of San Dimas and all the foothills in the month of May, so there's still some that need to be completed this week. We're just about done. But the new LRA maps that just got produced are for the 2026 defensible and space inspections. And now we have three zones. So we have moderate, high, and very high. We used to have just one zone, it was just very high. So now those three zones will inquire defensive space inspections. But currently, the moderate zone is still in the gray area. The fire chief will meet with the board of supervisors and decide whether they're going to inspect the moderate zone. But high and very high, we can expect for defensible space inspections, for sure. Now, what does that mean for the city? Well, the building code or building safety will have to adhere to new developments for residential in those identified areas or zones. We'll have to apply the Building Code Chapter 7 Alpha and also the Fire Code Chapter 49. So anything new development within those zones, that's where the city has to adopt an ordinance because they have to make sure that developers are adhering to those fire restrictive construction. So that's just in a nutshell. I didn't want to take up too much time. And Zone Zero is not in effect in LA County. I know that's a very hot topic. We're still waiting for the Board of Forestry to give us direction on Zone Zero. Zone Zero has been adopted by the governor. It's AB 3074, but in LA County, we're still awaiting the Board of Forestry's final decision on that. Then the fire chief will meet with the board of supervisors and see how that Zone Zero is going to work out. Zone Zero is going to be difficult because it's zero to five feet, and it's eliminating all combustible materials around a residence. So as you can see, that's going to be cost to residents, so we have to figure out a way how that's going to look. And just temporary being, it could be a three-year rollout on Zone Zero. So that's just in a nutshell. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Chief Maroni was pretty clear, press conference about, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, that he maybe wasn't as much of a believer in Zone Zero as he is now. I think that was his exact words, that he was actually going to seriously look at it and was a supporter. So I guess for residents, can they anticipate in the next three years, it sounds like, an adoption of that then by the board with his advocacy?
Yeah, I would say, based on the Board of Forestry's findings and the fire chief is supporting that, just from experience of what we've been seeing recently with fires, I do see, and it's already been adopted by the state, so we're just waiting for direction for county and the fire chief to be able to adopt that. But yeah, you can expect that to come, but once again, it's going to be a cost, eliminating all combustible materials. One of the big items is the wood and fences that are attached to people's homes. So we have to kind of figure out, how is that going to affect our residents, and how are we going to mitigate that?
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, out of curiosity, it appears that both the high school and the middle school fall into the very high zone. How are, what happens to them and how are they treated?
So we're only inspecting residential properties, yeah. So they would not fall under the enforcement, yeah.
Any further questions? Chief, thank you.
Welcome.
Sorry to keep you here so late. Hope you have a quiet night.
Do we know how flammable pickleball courts are?
All right. Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. We've already had that. City manager report?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, one item. Most of you have heard that Bonelli Park has a power outage. LA County Parks and Rec Department informed us on May 5th that the high voltage transformer supplying electricity to Bonelli Park failed and is beyond repair. The county is currently working with a certified contractor to replace the transformer, and it's expected to take six to eight weeks. Due to the outage, the park is temporarily closed as there's no power to support the central systems, including water distribution and the sewer lift station. The county parks, along with the contractor, are working seven days a week to resolve the issue as quickly as possible, and any inquiries regarding the park closure can be directed to the County Parks and Recreation Department at 909-599-8411. With that, that concludes my comments tonight.
Any further questions concerning the park? I don't know, I think we all get a jillion emails a day. So I get this suggestion that the people who call me, that they take this opportunity to spend some time in our public parks. So Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I have no reports tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the City Council, council members, reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency?
Mayor, I attended the League of California Cities Conference in Indian Wells and...
I think that was Contract Cities?
Or, what did I say? Oh, yeah, yeah, California Contract Cities, that's what I meant. It was fantastic, as usual, and just another educational experience.
We'll just go down the line.
Rachel.
I also attended the California Contract Cities Conference, and the relationships that were acquired there are invaluable, and just listening to the experiences of other cities, what they've done that works, that doesn't work, you know, we bring all that back to better our community.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the California Contract Cities Association Conference. I had to think about that, so I didn't make the same mistake Ryan did.
Mr. Mayor, I attended the same conference. I also want to salute our Assistant City Manager for being our flag bearer. He did a great job, and want to call him out for taking on that duty, so thank you.
I, too, attended the Contract Cities Conference in Indian Wells, and as we all know, there's nothing better than getting an opportunity to sit around and talk with people in other cities, because it's amazing, we are not the only city that have the little situations that we kind of, how we handle it and stuff like that, and I think it's just a good chance to meet with people and attend some classes. And then we all had to attend a ethics class, so, and Ryan passed.
No, Ryan has to make his up. I was at a family emergency during that.
All right, City Council requests for further future items, comments, and updates. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, I hope everybody had a good Memorial Day weekend. Councilmember Weber and I had the opportunity to represent the council at a little event at the Heroes Monument yesterday at 3:00. It was very nice. A gentleman named Carl, who's a Vietnam veteran, has played the taps there for many, many years, but yesterday was his last time playing a tune, if you will. So it was a good event, but if you haven't had an opportunity to swing by the monument, take an opportunity to check it out. Other than that, you know, we're getting into summer, so I hope everybody is hydrating. There's heat ahead. The city does a good job with its cooling centers as we get into higher levels of heat, so I encourage everybody to follow the city's website, sanddimascia.gov, for all of that information. And other than that, very soon, we're going to have the Gold Line Station dedication, which is on the 7th at 10:00 AM. So if you have the opportunity to come down and check that out, I think most of the council will be there, and you'll have an opportunity to see the new station as we get up and running in a new era in San Dimas. So I hope everybody has a wonderful week, and take care.
Rachel?
Yes, I hope everyone had a wonderful Memorial Day. Though the day has come and gone, the gratitude that we feel does not fade. Let us continue to carry the memory of our fallen heroes with us, not just once a year, but every day, through our actions, our values, and our commitment to one another. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I took a screenshot of it so that I could get it right, since we recognized Mosquito Control Awareness Week, I wanted to do a shout-out. So, here we go. The San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District awards a yearly Public Health Teacher of the Year Award, and this year, it was one of our very own teachers at Lone Hill Middle School, Mrs. Alizade. It says, "When dengue fever cases spiked in SoCal, she turned it into a hands-on learning moment partnering with EcoHealth's Operation GRID to teach students how science connects to real-world issues like public health, climate chains, and conservation." My son was fortunate enough to be in her class and was able to help collect water, and all of this was used, it was sent in to real scientists, and that information was used to help see what's going on in our area. So I feel honored that we, that our teacher was the one that was recognized.
Eric? This is Eric.
Ryan kind of stole my thunder. I was going to say happy Memorial Day to everybody, and then also mention that he and I went to the Memorial Day ceremony at the Heroes Monument. It really, I think I skipped last year, I was working or something like that, and I'm glad that we made it out there this time. I think the crowd has dwindled year after year when I've gone, so that's an opportunity for us to breathe a breath of fresh air back into the Heroes Memorial Day event. I think we can probably get some more people out there and get a new vigor around that particular event, and that would be a good thing. But I'm glad I went and was glad to be back. That's it.
Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to call out a few things. First, of course, I want to pay tribute to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice so that we are in a country that is free and we're able to have meetings here at our City Council because people gave their lives to fight for ideas and ideals so that we may live them. So I appreciate my colleagues going to the ceremony yesterday and for representing the City Council at that event. I also want to salute Councilwoman Bertacos, who gave the keynote speech at the Bonita, I don't know if it was the Bonita Unified School District Teachers Awards, I think it's broader than that, but both the mayor and I attended that, and the speech was outstanding, so well done tying your personal experience to those who are teaching and the impact that they have. Many of them, I'm sure, are teaching the next generation of City Council members. I also want to pay tribute to staff who organized a great open house at the Recreation Center. It was well-attended, it was really nice to see so many people come by, recognize that the resource we have, and then also to interact with the three of us who were there and ask us questions about it. So thank you again for putting on a great event, and as I had mentioned, I think it might be worth looking at combining it with Arbor Day and maybe the car show in the future. The last thing I wanted to address is something that I saw posted on the San Dimas Buzz a few days ago, and it was a local business owner who owns a business called Rainbow Paws, and she had posted that she's going to be at Pride in the Foothills at Glendora, which is this Saturday, the 31st, from 4:00 to 7:00 at Pink Beiner Park. And I was a little saddened to see some of the comments that were posted on this post about dismissing this event and diminishing members of our community. And as the first, and hopefully not the last, member of the LGBT community elected to this body, I wrote in and assured the members who are reading these comments that our city is far bigger-hearted than some of these comments may suggest, that we care deeply about each of our members of our community, especially those who are LGBT, and they're so big-hearted that they sent me to the City Council to represent them. I was especially touched by one gentleman who grew up here, who I want to read his comment because it had a lot of pain in it, and I could understand that, having experienced it myself. And this particular member of the community wrote, if I can find it, "Nice to see that there is support in the community. I wish we had stuff like this when I grew up here. And for all those homophobic people in my hometown, I hope you learn to love and grow one day." So speaking to those members of the community, I want you to know that there are many here who do support you, and that is the reason why we recognize Pride. It's not to put something out there and make people uncomfortable or rub things in people's faces, it's to show that everyone is welcome. And I dare say that I am so proud to work with the four of you because I believe all of us actually care about members of the LGBT community, and all of us are open to those members and would take their phone calls or anything that they needed in a heartbeat. So to those members in the community who are looking for your leaders, who want to send a message, I want to say that we all see you, we hear you, and as we enter Pride Month, we're here for you. And so thank you for letting me serve, and thank you to my colleagues for being so supportive and for always treating me as an equal. It means a lot, and the example you set does send a message to those who feel like no one hears them here in this city. So thank you. And with that, Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. I always say it, it's always good to be last because most things are already said, but I just wanted to take, we didn't have a representative or any kind of comments from the chamber tonight, but I just want to bring up that May 29th, which is Thursday, there's a multi-city mixer at Raging Waters. If anyone wants to attend, it's 5:00, 5:30 in the afternoon at Raging Waters. 5:00 at Raging Waters, it might be something very interesting to see, that's a multi-city chamber mixer. I want to remind people about the Pompei Memorial on Sunday, June 8th, at 5:00 PM. Hope to see, you know, folks come out, pay our respects. Louis did, you know, do a great service for this community, and it cost him his life, but there are some people that were at that Vons that day that believed that he not only gave his life, but to save their lives. And with that being said, I hope to see some people there. This is June, in the middle of June or the end of June, I want you guys to know that Travis is going to be, I don't know how old, on the June 26th. And in celebration of his birthday, we're going to do the State of the City Address on June 26th at 8:00 in the morning. I think the door is open around 7:00. Feel free to come by. In fact, we hope many folks come because we're going to tell you where we're at, where we've been, and where we're going. So June 26th, 8:00 in the morning, is going to be the State of the City Address. And with that all being said, I think we're going to look for an adjournment because I think we have about an hour or two hours' worth of closed session tonight to discuss some, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to tell us?
That's right, Mayor, there's two closed sessions on the agenda, and they're both labor negotiations items.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Hearing none, no objection? Close.